Good morning and welcome. The August 6th meeting of the LSU Board of Supervisors will come to order. Ms. Griffith, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Damp?
Here.
Mr. Starnes? Ms. Werner?
Here.
Ms. Aguilera?
Here.
Mr. Armenter?
Here.
Ms. Aronson?
Here.
Mr. Blossman? Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Morris? Mr. Morrow?
Here.
Mr. Temple?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Woods? Mr. Zuschlug?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, there is a quorum to begin.
Thank you, Ms. Griffith. For the invocation, I'll ask Mary Werner and then for Valencia Jones will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we ask your grace and blessing on this gathering today. We ask your continued blessings over this university, our communities, and this state. We ask your guidance and protection and wisdom as we continue to fight against this global pandemic, as we continue to work to bring our students back to campus, as our leaders continue to discern the best path forward for the protection of all. Lord, we ask your guidance, your wisdom, and your blessing over our new president as he continues on his path of leadership for the great Louisiana State University. We ask your protection, your grace. As we open this new school year, our students begin returning to our campuses, our teachers return to their classrooms, and we continue to expand our world through learning, through research, and knowledge, all by your gifts and your grace. All this we ask in your son's name. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Werner. Supervisor Jones?
Please stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible, infinite, infinite and evermore.
Today, we have some folks registered for public comment, I believe. Ms. Griffith, is that correct?
Yes, we have 10 individuals.
Can you please call those forward, folks forward? And due to the agenda today, I'm limiting public comments to three minutes, please.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. This is Jay.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Griffith, would you notice that I am now in attendance at the meeting? Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Blossman is here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have some folks registered for public comment.
Yes, all are members of the LSU community, and the agenda item is related to the first item on the Academic Committee, Return to Campus and COVID Mitigation.
Members of the board, my name is Dylan White. I'm an instructor in the English Department here at LSU. Let me start by saying that I've been eagerly awaiting the start of this fall semester. I haven't taught in a classroom in almost 17 months, and I simply miss interacting with LSU students. Despite this, I know that we cannot simply hope for the pandemic to go away. On August 5th, 2020, a year ago yesterday, Baton Rouge reported 146 new cases of COVID-19. LSU was already moving forward with plans to teach, learn, work remotely that fall. Yesterday, August 5th, 2021, there were 505 cases reported. The good news is that we know more about the hazards of COVID-19 and its Delta variant than we did a year ago. We know vaccines work. We know we must do everything we can to protect our children, nieces, and others. This is a matter of workplace safety. The faculty and staff here at LSU know that federal law entitles us to a safe workplace. We know that our employer must keep that workplace free of known health and safety hazards. LSU leadership must strengthen its connection to its employees by treating them with respect. Until we can know that our community is protected by a critical mass of vaccinated individuals, LSU faculty must be able to choose their teaching mode: fully remote, hybrid, or fully on-campus with all classrooms capped at 50% capacity. And this policy must be announced immediately. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it very much.
Short person at the mic. Good morning, President Tate, Provost Lee, members of the board. I'm Rosemary. I work in the Department of French Studies. I'm an associate professor. I never thought I would be standing here, and it's a little daunting, but there's too much at stake for even somebody shy like me to remain silent. When this pandemic started in December of 2019, it seemed so unreal. It was a distant disaster that could never possibly touch us. And three months later, our schools and city and country shut down. It's been almost a year and a half since then, and the life we knew is gone. You know what I miss, because we all miss things. I miss the buffet lunch at India Restaurant on Essen. And I miss pants. This is like novel today. I miss teaching Antigone in the Greek Theater on campus. And I miss my mom. She's 78, and it's been two years since I've hugged her. These are small things, and they're huge. They're the small, huge details of how we used to live. And I'm not here to make a political speech. I think we've all heard those, and we, there isn't really a way for them to bridge the two sides of any debate. So I'm here because my youngest son, whose name is Nathaniel, he's five, he's starting kindergarten next week, he's immunocompromised. If our vaccination rates were better, he would be here next to me on my hip trying to steal the mic to sing Moana. And, but he and his brother can't be vaccinated. I can't expose him to COVID because he can't fight it. For nearly 18 months, we've lived with the fear that he will get infected, that he will need a ventilator to keep from drowning in his own lungs. And I've already seen my baby on a ventilator because surgeons had to crack his little chest at six months old to repair a huge hole in his heart. He shouldn't have to go through that again. None of us should. But if I teach in person, I put him and his brother and my husband and my students and myself at that risk. I've submitted my ADA paperwork. What if that request is denied? In this fourth surge of the virus with a variant that attacks children and the Children's Hospital already near capacity, we've moved backward, not forward. If I go into my non-ventilated classroom to teach 20 students, most of whom statistically are not vaccinated, and each of whom has spent the day with larger groups of mostly unvaccinated fellow students who have also been in groups of mostly unvaccinated fellow students, the risk of exposure increases exponentially. So I'm here today to ask that you allow me, allow all faculty, to choose the method of course delivery that keeps us and our loved ones safe. And I hate this, not only speaking in front of you, speaking in public, but I didn't become a teacher to stay home. I miss being in the classroom. I miss the energy, the spontaneity, the serendipity, the funny things the kids say, and the things they get wrong, and the things they get right, and the way they support each other. I miss my colleagues. I miss faculty meetings. But all those things stand in my memory as representatives of freedom I didn't even know I enjoyed. They are necessary sacrifices to keep my children safe. But I can't do this alone. I need you, the leaders of this institution, to recognize and grant this need. And I'm not asking for just me. I'm just one person with one story, one family. Every person on this campus could tell you their story: elderly parents, existing comorbidities, compromised siblings, dependent children, dependent other people. We need you to hear us. And so I urge you, I implore you, please hear us. Thank you for this time.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. And I will say, I think you're the first person, I've had a great number of friends that were on faculty that said they actually missed faculty meetings, so I don't...
That might be a first statement ever.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I brought a visual, so I have a colleague who's going to show it at the right time. My name is Jeanne Donaldson, and I am the mother of two daughters, six and three, and an associate professor in the Department of Psychology. And I love teaching, and I'm passionate about sharing behavioral science with my students. I love applying the principles that I teach to my students, to my own class, to promote student learning and success. One thing I do every class is have my students work collaboratively in small groups to solve hypothetical behavioral problems. So while the students are discussing the behavioral principles underlying why their best friend is repeatedly texting the guy who just dumped her, I circulate the room to help groups get started or serve as a sounding board for their innovative ideas. We have a great time doing this in person. We have a less great time doing this in Zoom breakout rooms. To be honest, I do not like online teaching. It is more work and less fun. And I'm eager to return to the classroom in person. When I teach in person, I learn all of my students' names, and so it helps if I have a picture, pictures of them. So I brought pictures of my class. This is from Fall 2016, and as you can see, these classes are jam-packed. It's cozy. We get to know each other as I have to sideways shimmy to get between the rows of desks. In 2016, when I began at LSU and through 2019, this was fine. This is a class, it's a class of 70 students. And this semester, psychology has 18 class sections of 50 to 99 students. These classes are slated to begin with full enrollment in these same classrooms. There is no room for social distancing. This is not safe. We know it's not safe because the experts have urged us against spending an hour and 20 minutes in very close quarters with 70 other people, most of whom are unvaccinated. I wonder how many of you would feel comfortable being a student in one of these classes? By requiring these classes to return in person at capacity, LSU administrators are forcing our students and our instructors to put themselves and their loved ones they return home to at risk. LSU administrators are ignoring the pleas of our local hospital leaders that they are no longer providing adequate care because they are overwhelmed. LSU administrators are embarrassing us as highly educated, well-respected experts in our fields by directly ignoring the scientific consensus and advice of experts on what needs to be done to actually mitigate this virus. As my six-year-old said, "LSU knows better." Based on what we know about the Delta variant from the experts and the current rate of transmission in our community, a normal return to campus is unfortunately just not possible right now. The class activities I described can't happen safely right now. I would prefer to suffer through another semester of online teaching in Zoom breakout rooms than to suffer the preventable long-term illness or death of one of my students. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate you being here. Before we go further with the meeting, we are honored today to welcome Tim Brando. My good friend, Mr. Armentor, asked for us to please accommodate Mr. Brando, and it's certainly a pleasure to do that. Mr. Brando was here to speak about the basketball court issue and did a great deal of scheduled juggling to be here and cannot be here in September. So I was happy to accommodate Mr. Armentor and several others and allow Mr. Brando to speak. So we are honored to have Mr. Brando. He's been a sports broadcaster for 50 years. He began his career, as many of you know, here in Baton Rouge, and he has worked with CBS and Fox Sports. He is a member of Louisiana's Sports Hall of Fame, so we are honored and pleased to have Mr. Brando here today for a few minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. I appreciate the time again as I had back in February of 2019. And given the circumstances that we're here, and we've certainly already heard about it, I want to begin by saying that I had COVID back in Christmas time. I got the two shots in April, and I sincerely hope that everyone pays heed to everything that's going on as it relates to that moving forward in every walk of life in our state, which is currently having a difficult time. I'm here to talk about a lot of history and a lot of currency, because that's really what sports is all about. And it is usually a driving force in bringing people together. Sports brings all ethnicities together. It brings all walks of life together. In the past, in my years as a broadcaster, even though I started in Louisiana, I was always hesitant to talk about my affinity for LSU for fear that many others would say, "Well, he's a homer for the Fighting Tigers." Today, I'm here to talk about my affinity for LSU and what LSU does mean to me as I'm... The one thing I think we all have in common is we're invested. Everyone here is invested in this flagship university. I recently went into the Hall of Fame, as was mentioned by our chairman, Mr. Damp. And I don't know who it was, but a number of ads were put in the program in Akersh back in June. And my friend Kent Lowe, who's a senior sports information director, one of the most beloved people at LSU, cutting down the nets at the Final Four, was on the back cover. Joan Cronin, from Opelousas, Louisiana, went on to become a tremendous athletic director and coach, coached here in Louisiana, and worked with Pat Summitt at Tennessee. She was mentioned. This was an ad taken by LSU, and it included me. I never felt more proud, more honored for my history with Tiger Vision, being born in 1982, which helped launch my career as a broadcaster. I want everyone here to know that I have, down deep, kept my affinity and love for LSU within. But today, I'm here to talk about my affinity and love for LSU and how it brings us all together in our investment into it. You know, the polarization of our country that segments us is so sad, because we're more alike than we are different. And with regard to the history of LSU athletically, the gentleman that we want to honor, Dale Brown, has always been about that. We live in times when it's easy to say, "What happened in yesteryear? Oh, that was then. This is now." We practice revisionist history. We want to believe what we want to believe. Dale Brown did more for Black people in the state of Louisiana than any human being in this state, so said George Eames, the president of the NAACP Baton Rouge Chapter. Dale Brown remains a lifetime member of the NAACP. What he did in 1972, when he came here, our friend Colis Temple lived through that, as did many football players who turned to Dale Brown in times of need. Yes, I was a young broadcaster in 1979 when I came here. He saw something in me that even I didn't see, and I was pretty high on myself, usually sportscasters are, or we wouldn't get to where we are today. But Dale saw that. As it relates to women in athletics, Dale Brown was a champion for Sue Gunter when she became the head basketball coach for the women. Sue and I got to know one another very well, and she said to me, "My success, the players I brought in, the great Simone Augustus being one of those, she probably would not have been able to succeed in gathering that kind of momentum for her program if Dale Brown had not been a champion for her as basketball coach." If you have a chance between now and the next time you meet, I want you to take a look at this documentary. It's called Man in the Glass. This guy came in 1972. And his legendary battles with the NCAA in 1981 that continued through today changed rules that affected more than 800,000 athletes on an annual basis competing at the NCAA level. It wasn't just about winning championships, and he won his share of those, but it was also about human dignity and improving it for the modern-day student athlete. Dale Brown should have that floor at the Maravich Assembly Center named for him. And it's my understanding that we are going to have, in the very near future, new members into the Southeastern Conference, Oklahoma and Texas, which will garner even more revenue for the LSU Athletic Department. Schools within the SEC, beginning in 2025 at the latest, will be making $70 million per school annually from its television contract recently signed with ESPN. Now, I mention all of this because I understand, coming off COVID, everyone hemorrhaged money. Television hemorrhaged money. So I understand that the floor and the opportunity for naming rights commercially is an important thing as well. Well, I've been traveling in college basketball arenas for 40 years, and I have seen iconic coaches' names on basketball floors. But those coaches may not have accomplished nearly as much as Dale Brown. Coaches that had never been to Final Fours have their names on that floor. And oh, by the way, on the opposite side of the floor, corporations were willing to spend more money for the rights to put their corporate name on the opposite side of the floor because that iconic coach's name was there. Having Dale Brown's name on the floor doesn't cost LSU's Athletic Department anything. It makes LSU's Athletic Department that much more revenue. Skip Burtman, the legend of LSU, who was also here when I was here. He came in 1984. I was still working at Channel 9 at WAFB. I left in '86 for ESPN. Skip Burtman has said, and I quote, "Dale Brown's presence at Louisiana State University is worth more than my five national championships as head baseball coach." That's Skip Burtman. I'm a little emphatic today because this is my last opportunity to chat. In September, I'll be busy. I'll be at the L.A. Coliseum commemorating 9/11 with our first-ever Fox telecast when USC takes on Stanford. So when you meet again, I'm not capable of being here. I'm biased here. I love Dale Brown. He's 85 years old. He's still helping people. He's on the phone helping someone less fortunate, whether it's the American Indian or the oppressed young rural Black who's looking for a chance to get into school. That's who this man is. I appreciate your time. I hope you understand my enthusiasm for this, my love of Dale and my affinity for this great university. I was given an award for being an ambassador to the state of Louisiana that they tell me will not be given out again until someone that's as loud as me shows up again. I don't know who that person's going to be, but my wife certainly doesn't want to meet him. But thank you so much for your time today.
Mr. Brando, thank you. We're honored to have you here today. I know you went to a great deal of trouble to get here, and we all are in your debt. We appreciate your comments very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Unless there is objection, I move that we recess for committee meetings.
Mr. Damp?
Yes.
We still have individuals register for public comment.
We do have someone else for public comment?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Good morning, everyone. Is the microphone working? Okay. Good morning, everyone. I'm here to make a public comment on the agenda item of return, report to return, report on return to class and COVID mitigation. As new COVID-19 cases continue to reach record highs in Louisiana, faculty, staff, and students have been raising concerns regarding mitigating the virus while keeping a positive LSU experience. As a staff member at LSU, working with over 60 faculty, I believe it is important to leave a public comment because to inform the board what my colleagues and students are concerning about reopening in the fall semester. In Louisiana alone, there were 11,108 reported new COVID-19 cases on Monday alone and a little less than 5,000 cases each this Tuesday and Wednesday. The numbers on Monday was a record high, while seven-day averages are continuing to rise and not seeing a plateau soon, apparently. While my colleagues appreciate that a vaccine mandate would be instituted along with some other measures that were announced earlier this morning, reopening LSU while cases are hitting all-time highs appears to be a counterintuitive strategy to mitigate the virus. While getting a vaccine does keep individuals from contracting the virus most likely, the fear and the actual threat of virus continues to linger among everyone, whether they are part of the LSU community or not. On the other hand, they are concerned about its enforcement as well as the volatile situation of the overall pandemic. Faculty and staff members brought up that mask mandates instituted throughout last year were not always properly enforced. For example, excuse me, and that they are afraid that other mitigations measures would not be properly enforced similar to the mask mandates. On the, excuse me, on the other hand, the issue of masking, vaccinating, and testing have been heavily politicized, and my colleagues and I are afraid that undue conflicts among members of the LSU community would be prevalent should we completely reopen in the fall. To alleviate concerns from faculty, staff, and students, I believe allowing the option to, for faculty to move their classes online or hybrid and reducing seating capacity of all classrooms to 50% to allow social distancing is an ideal situation to keep everyone safe while providing a positive LSU experience for all. Please also consider other mitigation measures that are brought up by others in this meeting and comments that were left in the emails. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you being here very much. Okay.
Thank you for your attention. I'm Meredith Veldman. I'm a professor of history. If you go online to lsu.edu, you will find, right in the center of LSU's website, a box that says COVID-19 roadmap. And there you will find this statement: "LSU continues to follow all CDC and state safety guidance and will do everything possible to protect the health of our students, faculty, and staff." This, ladies and gentlemen, is a lie. This, ladies and gentlemen, is a lie. This is today's Advocate. I imagine many of you have seen it. The health system being strained. Doctors fear they will have to ration care. And at the top, latest surge may also be the longest. Here we stand at the worst period in the pandemic for Louisiana, and as these stories make crystal clear, the downward trajectory is only going to accelerate. And yet, the response of LSU's administration has been lackluster in the extreme. The policy that President Tate announced last week for this fall ignores the recommendations of the CDC and the president's own advisory committee and calls for return to classes at 100% occupancy. In response, over the last two days, over 330 faculty members and more signatures are coming in as we meet, have signed a petition to President Tate. That petition was sent as a written comment to the board yesterday and is now in the public record. I would like to highlight its central demand. We call on President Tate to honor his own promise to follow the science and to honor the authority over educational policy granted to faculty by LSU bylaws and regulations by returning to the policies and procedures implemented for instruction during the 2020-2021 academic year. Specifically, faculty must be allowed to choose their teaching modes: 100% remote, hybrid with 50% occupancy for on-campus component, in-person with 50% occupancy. The situation in Louisiana is more dire now than at any point since the spring of 2020, when LSU went entirely remote because of the dangers posed by this pandemic. It is unconscionable that the administration would ask faculty, staff, and students for a full return to campus under these dangerous conditions when we know these alternative options are available and that they work. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Blake Howe, and I have taught at LSU for 11 years. As you evaluate safety plans for the fall semester, I'm sure you are weighing many competing interests, but I ask you to prioritize these three considerations above all others. First, I ask you to consider people who have not been able to take the vaccine for health reasons and people who have received the vaccine but are unlikely to have produced sufficient antibodies. These people depend upon the immunity of others for their protection. A packed classroom with only 30% of students vaccinated is not safe for them. Second, I ask you to consider people who live with those who are vulnerable, including parents of unvaccinated children and people who care for disabled and elderly family members. And to be personal for a moment, this is a category that I put myself in, and I can't adequately express to you how devastated I would be if I contracted a breakthrough case of COVID at LSU and spread it to someone I love. Finally, I ask you to consider people who struggle with mental health. Ask any faculty member, and I'm sure they'll tell you stories of students in crisis during this pandemic, students who grappled with depression, loneliness, anxiety, and grief. We need to put this pandemic behind us. LSU cannot be responsible for accelerating it further. Please, let's follow CDC guidelines for higher education and limit classrooms to 50% capacity. It is not safe to pack classrooms full of unvaccinated students. It's wrong and will have harmful consequences for our community and the vulnerable people among us. Please consider increasing testing requirements for unvaccinated students from once per month to once per week. Better yet, just require the vaccine already, as hundreds of public universities have done. I understand that instituting requirements like this would be controversial, but they're prudent, they're moral, they're righteous. A requirement like this would be a signal that tigers take care of each other, that now, as the Delta variant ravages our state and packs our emergency rooms, we commit to protecting the vulnerable among us. Imagine the transformational message that would send to our community in its time of great crisis. Imagine the consequences of continuing on the current path. Thank you for your service to our university, and I wish you all and all university leaders wisdom, courage, and strength.
Thank you, sir, very much.
Next is Max Conrad.
Good morning. Can you guys hear me? I was here two months ago in Alexandria. It's good to be here back. Good to see everyone. My name is Inessa Bazavez. I'm a professor of music theory at the College of Music and Dramatic Arts here at LSU. Yesterday, my colleague at the Law Center, Edward Richards, sent a memo to the board. He couldn't be here to read it. It's quite a lengthy memo, and I have extra copies. If anyone's interested, I'll leave it out here. But for the sake of the public record, I'd like to highlight a few passages in this Edward Richards is professor of law at the LSU Law Center, and the title of the memo is "The Legality of an LSU COVID Vaccination Mandate." Professor Richards was involved in public health law and policy for more than 40 years. He has worked with CDC, the Department of Justice, the Department of Homeland Security, and the American Public Health Association, among many other associations, and state and local health departments. In his memo, he writes, quote, "I want to address three specific questions about an LSU vaccination mandate. Is it prohibited by the U.S. Constitution? Is it prohibited by federal law? And is it prohibited by Louisiana law?" The answer to all of these three questions is no. He goes into a lengthy argument in his memo. I'll spare you the time. I'm gonna jump to conclusions. There are no legal bars to LSU or other Louisiana public universities, asking the Louisiana Department of Health to permit them to impose universal vaccine mandates on students at the university. As a matter of public policy, it is a tragedy that these mandates were not imposed last spring, when the vaccines were first available to the general adult population. Early imposition of a vaccine mandate in public and private universities would have reduced the community spread of COVID in university communities such as Baton Rouge, Lafayette, Shreveport, and others. It would have reduced the spread of the Delta variant and would have made the reopening of the universities in the fall of 2020 to in-person classes less dangerous. The board should adopt a vaccination mandate that is effective immediately. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Max Conrad is here with us.
I and some of my colleagues in the College of Art and Design are being asked to teach courses with enrollments of 350 to 950 students in one classroom. Even with 50% capacity, I fear that these have the potential of being super-spreader events because of the very low vaccination rates of LSU students. I would call for the option of 100% online teaching as being a better choice for huge classes such as this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman, President Tate, and members of the Board of Supervisors, thank you for allowing me to make this comment. My name is Ravi Rao. I'm a professor of physics and astronomy at LSU, where I have taught and done research for 47 years. I sent in a written comment, but I decided to put it aside because the solemnity and seriousness of what we face doesn't seem to have sunk in. My colleague just showed today's front page of the Advocate, but I was struck that on last night's public television news hour, there was a long segment where the Baton Rouge General Hospital Chief of Emergency Care spoke with anguish about 80% of ICU filled with COVID patients. And then an Our Lady of the Lake nurse also spoke. And I have a feeling that this solemnity of what we face has not really sunk in because this board, in your June 18 meeting in Alexandria, voted 9 to 2 to require vaccinations once the Louisiana Department of Health adds it to their list. Now, Louisiana statute, of course, it is not on the current list of the vaccines, but Louisiana statute says that one seeks the authority. And this is what some of the universities did. They are being dismissed as private, but clearly LSU did not. So it was empty words in your resolution if you did not even seek that authority. For months, the faculty, hundreds of faculty in faculty forums, have been told one excuse after the other. Now, you have just heard, and you should read the statement by Professor Edwards. LSU has a law school. He is a distinguished professor of public health law for over 30, 40 years, and every one of the arguments that is thrown out has been shown to be not in the law of Louisiana. Yesterday morning, on a local radio show, Chairman Dampf took the next step. Since Indiana University was mentioned, his statement was that Indiana is different from Louisiana. Of course it is. We know that. But Louisiana law, and this is why the statement of Professor Edwards of LSU Law School, does the board ever consult its own faculty, including the law faculty? And it has been following their advice, however limited it may be, of one legal counsel or outside law firms, and we know from the whole Title IX scandal of recent years that this has not particularly served LSU well. Now, we did hear the piance to LSU athletics a few minutes ago. I completely share in my admiration for LSU athletics, and of course, with Mr. Temple right here. And we are speaking, after all, in the Tiger Stadium, hallowed ground, the Mecca of athletics. But LSU is also a research one university, which means science, reason, we are even inheritors of the Enlightenment. Should we not keep all this in front and always narrow it down to some little legal argument which is indeed incorrect and is thrown up one after the other, and they are being changed all the time? Now, above all, parents turn children to us, and we owe them to keep them safe. We educate them, but you cannot educate in the intensive care unit, leave alone in the You are supervisors, and the students, the staff and faculty that you supervise, you owe a debt for their safety and those considerations, as well, as I said, the considerations of what a university should be in all its aspects. Athletic, certainly, but also, as inheritors, as I said, of centuries of reason, science, and so on. And not be so deterred by the passions of today and ignorant attorneys general who are called repeatedly. This morning's Advocate also has a story of how he had to withdraw from the case that he tried to bring against a private college in Monroe. Fears of this are not what a university should be just giving in to. The Board of Supervisors has a responsibility to the citizens of this country. We are an A and M college. I remind you that during the Civil War, President Lincoln and Morrill enacted the Morrill Act, which set up these agricultural and medical colleges in every state for the benefit of the citizens through the education and research of its citizens. This is the legacy we also have. Pay heed to them. As I said, I've taught here for 47 years. I've never once addressed the board. This is my first meeting. I thank you for the courtesy that you have given me, but I would like to call your attention to your responsibilities. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Lastly, we have Margot Bro.
Folks, I've been somewhat lenient about the time restrictions, and the best you can do to keep it to three minutes would really be appreciated.
Is this on? Can you hear me? Okay. Hello, my name is Margot Bro, and I teach French dans le département français ici à LSU. I applaud and appreciate the Board of Supervisors for holding their meeting today at 50% capacity. This is wise and prudent. As for me, I must teach in a small classroom of 24 desks in the basement of Allen Hall. I invite you to come with me. From here, we'd walk to Allen Hall and enter the west door and go down a flight of stairs into the basement, where the ceiling is low and the hallway is packed with students during class change. Then, we will turn right into a small hallway, where we will find, again on the right, the door to Room 38. Inside this small room, there are no windows but 24 seats, and that is where I must teach my 19 mostly unvaccinated students for one hour, three hours in a row, 11:30, 12:30, and 1:30. I will teach them Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday for the next 15 weeks. This will be a petri dish for the Delta variant, because also, my students have only one doorway in and out as they bump into each other, as they go into that small hallway that leads to the larger hallway. This worries me because on Saturday mornings, I am charged with the care of a six-year-old and a nine-year-old who are unvaccinated, and lovely children, I must add. I would want nothing to happen to them. So I love my job, I love my students, and I would like the option of mitigating my risk by either teaching at 50% capacity, as this meeting is doing, though the registrar informed me that due to high student enrollment, which is a good thing, this will not be possible because there are no classrooms available. Or I'd like to have the option of teaching online, though my preference would be to teach in person. I must follow the safety guidelines, as mentioned in LSU's roadmap to the fall, which says, "The health and safety of our community will always be our guidepost." Thank you for your time. I wish you continued health. Merci beaucoup de m'avoir reçu.
Merci beaucoup. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Those are all the individuals registered for public comment.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna recognize Dr. Tate for a comment.
I appreciate the comments from my colleagues and the faculty. Just one update. We sent a letter to the Commissioner of Health as well as the Higher Education Commission. We've been in contact with them on a consistent basis since I've been hired, actually, because I actually believe we should be vaccinated. I won't rehash all the politics related to vaccination here. They're well-established. But we did ask that, because we know that the emergency status for the vaccine is going to be lifted very soon, and that they would put it on the approval list, which would then ultimately end up with a mandate for vaccination at LSU. then ultimately end up with a mandate for vaccination at LSU broadly defined. And we would then implement that mandate as part of our protocols. So it is the intent to do that. The time horizon for that is misaligned in clear ways. However, we're not going to hesitate to do that.
Thank you, sir, very much. Okay. At this time, unless there's objection, I move that we recess for committee meetings. Hearing no objection, the board is in recess. Ms. Jones, will you please call the academic committee to order?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Griffith, please call roll.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Aguilera?
Here.
Mr. Armenter?
Here.
Ms. Aronson?
Here.
Mr. Blossman?
Here.
Mrs. Starnes?
Here.
Ms. Werner?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Madam Chair, as a form.
Thank you, Ms. Griffith. This semester, LSU of Alexandria is launching CORE, its Center for Opportunity Research and Experimental Learning. The mission of CORE is to provide services and programming that supports students as they pursue activities of research, scholarship, inquiry, and creativity. Examples include an undergraduate research journal, the Oak Leaf, a campus scholar day, and various experimental learning options, including professional development and student engagement. These services and programs promote holistic student development across all disciplines by incorporating inclusive mentorship and engaging instruction. Over at LSU Health Sciences Center, Shreveport, Dr. Wayne Orr, Director of the Center for Cardiovascular Disease and Sciences, and Dr. Karen Stokes, Professor of Molecular and Cellular Physiology, Assistant Director of CCDS in Scientific Excellence, was awarded an NIH-funded T-32 grant to establish the multidisciplinary training in cardiovascular pathophysiology training program. The MTCP Training Program is only the sixth current NIH-funded T-32 training program in Louisiana and the only one in the state focused on cardiovascular disease research. At the flagship campus, LSU and Louisiana Tech University are proud to announce the establishment of the Center for Innovations and Structural Integrity Assurance, or CISA, the first industry-university cooperative research center for either institution. CISA will serve as a trusted source for transformative insights, predictive capabilities, and materials, innovations across broad and door industrial sectors, focusing on structural integrity, assurance for small and large structures, and mechanical components. Failure of infrastructure and components can have economic, social, and environmental consequences. In fact, the failure of aging civil infrastructure is projected to result in $4 trillion in losses to the United States GDP and 2.5 million jobs lost over the next 10 years. No currently active IU-CRC matches the CISA's research and development capabilities, hence the importance of its establishment. At this time, I call on Dr. Tate to present the first item. President Tate.
Let me talk to the COVID. The first item is a report on the return to class and the COVID mitigation. Provost Lee will provide that.
Okay, sure. Good morning, everybody. I'm Matt Lee. I'm the interim Executive Vice President and Provost. The COVID mitigation strategies have been laid out and delineated to the campus community. The first strategy is, of course, a strong encouragement for students to get vaccinated and provide readily available vaccination opportunities on campus. We have a continuing campaign going for our students, faculty, and staff, and are working on a daily basis to make sure that we strongly encourage that. In addition, we have a campus-wide mandate for masking indoors, and then also are asking folks to mask when they are within 50 feet of coming into the entrance of a building. Beyond that, we have worked with our environmental scientists and engineers to evaluate the ventilation in classrooms, and they have been working with facility services to establish enhanced ventilation through the HVAC systems and also bringing in HEPA filtration systems for the teaching spaces on campus. Beyond this, we have, we will continue to implement our sophisticated wastewater monitoring system that we have established over the last course of the last year with our environmental engineers, where they monitor the wastewater coming out of our congregate living spaces and other buildings. And then they are able to, when they see a spike in the wastewater in the genome units per liter with COVID indications, they're able to go over there and institute testing within the congregate living quarters and then either quarantine or isolate anyone who they discern to be positive. We also are requiring upon entry to the university for students to terminate evidence of either being vaccinated or of having a recent negative COVID test over the last five days before coming, or I think a recent indication within the last 90 days of having tested positive and then apparently having some immunity to it. For those unvaccinated, we will institute a regular testing regimen across campus over the course of the semester, and we're going to provide both testing and vaccination facilities on campus. And then in addition to that, for classes that are in excess of 100 students, we are giving faculty the option to hold their class at 50% occupancy. To give you some sense of context and scale there, at the undergraduate level, our institution typically in a fall semester will have around 5,000 sections of classes, of which around 225 of those have 100 or more students. And so those are the primary mitigation measures that we have established, in addition to Plexiglas barriers still in place in the classrooms and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. Please present item number two.
Thank you, Supervisor Jones. The second item on the agenda is a request from LSU A&amp;M to establish a graduate certificate in estate planning and taxation within the Paul M. Abair Law Center. The certificate is a 16-hour program offered only to J.D. students. Nationally, there is an increase in demand for estate planning and taxation attorneys as approximately 20% of the population, the baby boomer generation, reaches the age where these services are most needed. In addition, the COVID-19 pandemic has led many Americans to start planning for their future, particularly with respect to end-of-life issues. Coincidentally, the LSU Annual Estate Planning Conference, which provides continuing legal education credits for legal professionals, celebrated 50 years in the fall 2020, branding it as the oldest conference of its kind in the state. A credentialed program would strengthen LSU's strong reputation as a leader in these areas. The certificate is not offered at any school in Louisiana, and only a few other schools in our geographical region offer something similar. The law school hopes to recruit new students with this program because it is highly relevant, making it an attractive option for students as they weigh future employment options. The LSU Law Center already offers courses in these areas and has seen a sharp increase in demand since the onset of the pandemic. In the spring 2021 term alone, one of the required courses increased traditional enrollment by about 50%, going from 50 students to 107. Another course had to be offered in two sections to meet demand. The certificate requirements can be met with existing courses. It does not require any additional faculty, any additional facilities, or equipment at this time. LSU Law anticipates approximately five to 10 completers each year. Thank you for your consideration of this item.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. This is a great program. Happy to see, happy to see it here on the agenda today. Are there any questions regarding this, this item? Is there a motion to recommend the proposal as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Blossman.
Is there a second? Second by Supervisor Starnes. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Is there any opposition? Okay, without opposition, the motion passes. Item number three, Dr. Lee.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a request from LSU A&amp;M to reauthorize admissions policies related to standardized tests for an extended limited term. You may recall that in December 2020, this board approved a temporary suspension of the standardized test score requirement for admission to LSU because of the difficulties related to the COVID pandemic. The Delta strain of the coronavirus has caused cases to surge in Louisiana and across the world. As such, there are uncertainties about the successful administration of standardized tests. We are asking for an extension of this policy for students applying for admission in academic terms that start during the 2022 and 2023 academic year. I will now ask my colleague, Vice President for Enrollment Management, Dr. Jose Aviles, for comment on the successful effect of this policy for our 2021-2022 recruiting cycle.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you yet again, really days before we set a new fall semester in motion in which we welcome the fourth consecutive record-breaking class here at LSU. This fall's class will again break records for being the largest, most diverse, and most accomplished freshman class in our institutional history. As many of us in this room know quite well, 2017 was the final year of four consecutive years of a downward slide in freshman enrollment and missed targets, which had a significant impact on our institution. When compared to 2017, this year's class shows an increase, dramatic increase, of 44% more freshmen enrolled coming into this fall. That growth includes a 22% growth in residents, an impressive 152% growth in non-residents, 121% growth in historically underrepresented students, with African-American students growing at 120%. Low-income or Pell-eligible students have grown by 91%. And students who are first in their family to attend college have grown by an astonishing 225% since 2017. Impressively, we have also seen a 45% growth in our honors college enrollment. And with all of these gains, our quality has been maintained and slightly increased, an incredible feat that I would say for any enrollment manager or office to accomplish in a period of such significant growth. These are remarkable achievements for sure, and I'm confident that when we look across the SEC, LSU is a leader in terms of enrollment in our freshman classes over this period. And in fact, last year, in a national survey of large publics, institutions self-reported their fall enrollment at the beginning of last fall, and in that survey, it was evident that LSU was fourth in the country in overall growth in the freshman class. So there is so much to be proud of, and we have worked extraordinarily hard in the interest of serving students and our great institution. And there is still so much work to do. But I am proud that LSU is emerging as a leader in enrollment nationally. We are setting an example of how an institution can meet the challenges of our day and be a relevant institution that makes a deep impact in our state and our country. All of these accomplishments reflect a collective effort, not a single office or a single individual. We have made informed and difficult decisions at critical junctures, and then we have pivoted to execute at a very high level. And we've done just that. We've done, we've, we've had all, every one of us, a hand in building the successes that we've experienced, which I think is going to be noted as the most impressive and successful enrollment period in LSU's 160-year history. So today, I am here to present the, the extension of last year's resolution and to allow, for allowance to campuses to temporarily suspend the requirement for standardized tests yet again. We certainly, currently, just don't know how test administrators are going to cope with the Delta strain of COVID and what provisions are going to be made by test administrations of these exams. And yet, we are poised to, to start accepting applications for the 2022-23 entering classes. Students need to be aware of what the requirements are as they engage with us. The Organization Fair Test, which tracks college entrance exam policies, pointed out that 2/3 of bachelor-granting institutions in the U.S. will not be requiring the SAT or ACT for the fall 22, 2022. In another article from Inside Higher Ed, ACT estimated that half of all four four-year colleges are, were test optional before the pandemic, and yet another 30% have transitioned to being test optional during the pandemic. That's 80% of all institutions, according to their estimation. From our own environmental scan, we have found that 48 of the 50 public flagships in the country will be test optional for fall 2022. Importantly, test optional policies have been adopted in statewide, statewide policies in California, which accounts for nearly 150 of our new freshmen coming into this year's class. New York, the SUNY system, has also adopted a test optional policy. New York has given us 100 new freshmen in this year's class. And the DC Metro area institutions have largely become test optional for fall 2022, and DC Metro now accounts for almost 200 nonresidents in this year's class. When we look at Texas, institutions in Texas, including Texas A&amp;M, UT Austin, and Rice University, have gone test optional for fall 2022. A test optional policy for the academic year 2022-23 is going to ensure our ability to compete in a highly competitive marketplace and greatly assist our efforts to achieve the university's established targets for this recruitment cycle. So I thank you for your consideration of this resolution and to continue to support the work that we have done. Thank you.
Ms., Madam Chairman? Madam Chair, could I ask a quick question about the, the, that's great statistical numbers. I'm tickled to death about it. But I do have a question. If we're not going to require testing, how does that affect TOPS?
The TOPS is separated, administered by Los Angeles separately from our policies and admission.
I understand that, but aren't the minimums of ACT to qualify for TOPS? And if students aren't being admitted or, so they're not taking the test, how will they qualify for TOPS award?
Yeah, our in-state residents in this year's class, Mr. Blossman, has largely taken the ACT because of the TOPS requirements, and they have found a way to do that.
Right, so if you don't take the ACT, as far as you know, and that's my, I'm just trying to gather information about it, that you wouldn't have, if you didn't get to take the test, you're a 4-0 student, you didn't take it, you're at LSU, do you qualify for TOPS, to your knowledge?
Not, not according to the Los Angeles policies, correct.
Okay.
All right. I heard a lot of percentages, and I appreciate the percentages, but I, I'd like to simplify a couple of things so I'll understand. I'd like to know how many, literally how many freshmen are entering LSU. I'd like to know how many freshmen from Louisiana are entering LSU. I'd like to know how many valedictorians and salutatorians from the high schools in Louisiana are entering LSU. And I'd like to know what the ACT score requirement is to enter LSU. And I'm, I'm going to add something to it. Now, the reason I want to know that is because if we have, if we have a guy at Derilla High School and he runs a 42540, we recruit him extremely hard at LSU. I want to know what the process is for recruiting valedictorians and salutatorians from Louisiana high schools are.
Absolutely. So to start, to answer the question, the class that we're projecting for the freshman, for this freshman year is 7,100 students coming into the freshman class.
7,100.
7,100. So, and of that, we are projecting nearly 5,000 in-state residents that will be part of this year's class. The ACT average currently is 26.4 compared to 25.9 last year. And the grade point average for the entering class is 3.76 compared to 3.70 last year. I'll say again that these numbers are in flux as we continue to see students transition into final enrollment coming into the year, but those, those are the numbers today. As it relates to the number of valedictorians, I can find that number. I don't, I didn't bring that number with me, but I can certainly circle back with you. But I can tell you that we have been incredibly focused in, in making sure that we are keeping our talented students here in Louisiana and have been incredibly successful. our talented students here in Louisiana and have been incredibly successful in doing that. When you hear that number, five thousand students coming into the class, again, when you think about 2017, that freshman class brought in a right-under-four-thousand freshmen from Louisiana. So we are, we are, at this point, increased by almost a thousand more students coming from our home state, and we're very proud of that work. So you're right that our focus is on the talent, students who have, you know, who are the best and brightest, and we believe are capable of doing the work at this level. We are competing for those students and keeping them here in Louisiana and keeping them here at the flagship.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Supervisor Starnes, did you have a question?
I just wanted to make a favorable motion to the doubt, the resolution.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? Thank you for that excellent report. Is, um, so I've got a motion from Supervisor Starnes. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Next item, Dr. Lee.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next item is a request from LSU A&amp;M for the continued authorization of the Horace H. Hearn Jr. Institute for Theoretical Physics, which has been a shining example on our campus since its inception in two thousand and six. This institute was made possible through the generous endowment of two chairs in theoretical physics at LSU by the late Horace Hearn Jr. The institute was established according to recommendations in Mr. Hearn's will, with two-chair positions serving as anchors for the institute. Dr. Jorge Poland was hired in two thousand and one as the first Hearn chair, and the late Dr. Jonathan Dowling joined LSU in two thousand and four as the second chair. Dr. Poland is currently heading a search committee in the Department of Physics and Astronomy to appoint a replacement for the second Hearn chair. The Hearn Institute exemplifies LSU's research prowess and continuous drive for innovation with over one hundred and thirty refereed publications and significant success in extramural funding. The institute is on the cutting edge of one of the fastest-growing areas of research in the field, gravitational physics, and as a result, is able to attract extremely talented faculty from all over the world. The late doctor Jonathan Dowling was just one example of the extraordinary faculty that worked there. The institute's costs are covered through its endowment of two chairs and through extramural funding. Based on historical data, the institute expects to receive over seven hundred thousand per year from grants and contracts over the next five years. Thank you for your consideration of this request.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. Are there any questions? Is there a motion to recommend the proposal as presented?
I motion.
Okay, I've got a motion, and is there a second?
Second.
Is that Supervisor Armenter?
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Without opposition, the motion is approved. Okay, we've got one last item.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Jones. So, um, the next request is from the LSU Health Sciences Center in New Orleans for continued designation of the Alcohol and Drug Abuse Center of Excellence. I would like to now turn it over to Chancellor Larry Olley to present this item. Chancellor?
On July first this year, Joe Marshbacher, a longtime colleague of ours who'd been LSU Health Science Center for thirty-eight years, died after a short bout with cancer. Our Faculty Senate has unanimously approved the Faculty Senate Resolution, and I appreciate the opportunity to read it into the record of the board. This resolution honors the life, legacy, and contributions of Joseph M. Marshbacher III, Ph.D., whereas Joseph Marshbacher III, Ph.D. rose through the ranks of the faculty from an assistant professor in the LSU Health Science Center, Department of Pharmacology and Experimental Therapeutics in nineteen eighty-three, to become the professor and head of the department in nineteen eighty-nine. Whereas as department head, he built a vibrant, well-funded, and effective department. And in nineteen ninety-one, he co-founded the Alcohol and Drug Abuse Center of Excellence, whereas he was an extremely, an extensively published, well-funded, multiple NIH grant researcher, an award-winning teacher who always put the education of the students at the forefront. Whereas he was the longest-serving Vice Chancellor of Academic Affairs and Dean of the School of Graduate Studies, having been appointed in nineteen ninety-eight, and serving the institution, the students, and the LSU system for more than twenty-three years with integrity and a commitment to academic excellence. Whereas he fully engaged in the expansion of the research enterprise, including multiple centers of excellence, the support of innovation, and the nurturing of relationships with governing bodies and other institutions within the LSU system, as well as across the state, nation, and globe. Whereas he safeguarded students and their families at LSU Health Science Center during Hurricane Katrina, remaining on campus during the storm and afterwards until all could be evacuated. Whereas he helped maintain the integrity of LSU Health Science Center's academic programs post-Katrina, both in his temporary home in Baton Rouge and upon his return to New Orleans. Whereas his legacy will live on through the more than twenty thousand graduates whose careers he helped shape. Whereas his dedication to the mission of Health Science Center was foremost, and his dedication to academic goals was unmistakable and unwavering. Whereas he left an indelible mark on our university and made enormous contributions to health and science, be it resolved that the Faculty Senate of the LSU Health Science Center recognizes and honors Dr. Joseph M. Marshbacher's exceptional, selfless dedication to all of the schools of the LSU Health Sciences Center. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Olley. Are there any questions or comments? Is there a motion to recommend the proposal as presented?
Second.
Moved by Supervisor Warner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Williams. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Is there a motion to adjourn the committee with no objection?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, well, no objection, the committee is adjourned. Mr. Chair, this concludes the business of the Academic and Research Committee.
Thank you very much Supervisor Jones, appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Brown, would you please convene the Finance Committee?
Uh, yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Uh, Ms. Griffith, would you please call our role?
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Woods?
Ms. Arrington?
Here.
Mr. Blossman?
Here.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Morris?
Mr. Temple?
Here.
Mr. Zuschlaw?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, there's a forum.
Okay, thank you. Uh, at this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Donna Torres to, uh, make, uh, present the resolutions or requests.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. The first item is a request to authorize the university to enter into a contract for third-party administrator services for the LSU First Health Plan. LSU First is the university's self-funded health insurance program, covers approximately twenty thousand lives. The plan partners with a third-party administrator to administer claims in a manner consistent with the plan design and to manage the provider network. The contract with the current TPA ends December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. In preparation, the university recently solicited proposals for the TPA partnership to begin with the new plan year on January one, two thousand and twenty-two. After a competitive process, Web TPA Employer Services was selected as the most qualified respondent. It is expected that a contract with Web TPA will lead to stability in premiums and cost savings for the LSU First Health Plan with aggressive provider contracting, direct contract strategy with highly utilized Aetna providers, value-based contracts, a focus on employee wellness, discount guarantees, and a trend guarantee. The extent of savings will be based on the actual claims paid. The documents have been reviewed by LSU Human Resource Management, Procurement Services, and Office of General Counsel, and we would request your authorization to allow the president or his designee in consultation with General Counsel to exercise, exercise an agreement with Web TPA.
Thank you, Ms. Torres. Are there any questions? Hearing no questions, except a motion to recommend a proposal.
So moved.
Uh, by?
Me, Lee.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Mallett.
Mr. Mallett, thank you.
Second.
Second by?
Mr. Johnson.
By Mr. Blossman, thank you. Okay, we have a motion, a second. Are there any objections? If not, that motion, uh, will, is passed, and would you present the next item, please?
The second item is a request from the, um, Uni, the Shreveport Campus to authorize a change to institutionally funded scholarships for first-time freshmen. LSU Shreveport first-time freshman scholarships help to generate an attractive financial aid package for the recruitment of high school students. Having worked with Ruffalo Noel Lovitz Consultant Group, looking at financial aid predictive modeling, it was suggested that a more advantageous scholarship package at the highest scholarship level, the Louisiana Scholarship, would be to include a housing stipend instead of a book stipend. As LSU S has taken ownership of the housing adjacent to campus, Pilot's Point, there needs to be strategic alignment of housing to scholarships. For the Fall 2022, the Louisiana Scholarship would drop the book allowance amount of twelve hundred dollars and replace it with a housing allowance specifically to be used at Pilot's Point Apartment Complex. There is expected to be a positive net increase of students living in the LSU S housing, which will assist in the annual cost of operating and maintaining these apartments. We request that the president is authorized to allow LSU Shreveport to change the scholarship at the highest level from a book allowance to a housing stipend applicable to the LSU S housing.
Well, thank you. Uh, I'll just make a comment. The LSU pilot housing will add, really, to the quality of our students that live on campus, and we, Chancellor Clark is here presenting questions about this, uh, request.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Torres, what's the total value of the scholarship?
The total value of the scholarship is?
Twelve. Uh, twelve hundred.
It's twelve hundred dollars. It's tuition fees plus the housing allowance of twelve hundred dollars.
That's not the total value of the scholarship.
So, excuse me. Dr. Clark, could you tell us the total value of the scholarship? I don't have the tuition and fees.
Um, I had just sent a text because I had realized, before you started speaking, I thought I had it with me in the folder here, and I did not. Uh, let me, if I might, uh, it was mentioned about Ruffalo, uh, helping us with what we ought to do. What they found is we've been very successful with what is called OER, or Open Enrollment Resource, where we find a way that through the library, by how we set it up, that students don't have to buy books, that they are able to get their books, and not for all courses, because it doesn't work for all courses. But we've been able to reduce down the books' cost. And so, some of that, that was in the scholarship for books, the students didn't take because they didn't need to take. And so, it's really substituting, it's about a two-hundred-dollar, that, Jason may have it right there, the difference, the real difference.
How many scholarships do y'all give a year, first time? Do you know?
How many scholarships do we give per year?
Yeah, the first time.
Well, you approved for us a Pell Grant scholarship that is for any student that has Pell Grant qualified, to be assured that they will pay no tuition. And seventy percent of our students have financial aid, federal financial aid need. So, those students all qualify for this across the board, of those that come in.
Something good that LSU does.
That's what we, and you approved that a year ago, so we're just starting it this fall. So what we're doing is just changing the part, which I think was net, I'm not sure if Jason had, I think, I thought it was a net of two-hundred dollars.
It's, it's a net of zero.
I mean, it's a net of zero, but the part for, there was two-hundred dollars went for books out of that part of it, and it now would go towards housing, is how I believe it, it goes. But it's, it's what the students that are applying for have a greater interest in asking about housing than they are about the books. And again, because of our OER program, we are reducing down the actual costs of students for buying books for class. So we are aligning it with what the students were telling us by survey.
Mr. Chairman, if, uh, there's no more discussion, I would make a motion to accept.
Okay, we, we have a motion. Uh, Mr. Mallett, do we have a second?
Richard, I second.
I can't. Uh, Mr. Zuschlaw, okay, thank you, have a second. Uh, any discussion? Any questions? Is there any objection to the motion? If not, uh, motion passes. Would you move on to the next item, please?
The next item is a request to authorize the university to renew the contract for pharmacy benefit manager services for the LSU First Health Plan. At this September two thousand and twenty board meeting, the Board of Supervisors approved the pharmacy benefits manager for the LSU Health, Health Plan. The contract with the provider, Med Impact Healthcare Solutions, runs through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, with the option for two twenty-four-month renewals. The initial estimate of savings with the Med Impact contract was approximately six million dollars. The health plan has realized three point two million in savings through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. There is a schedule showing a comparison of the same period in two thousand and twenty compared to two thousand and twenty-one to demonstrate the savings. The request is to authorize the president or his designee to act on behalf of the board in consultation with General Counsel to exercise the twenty-four-month renewals of the agreement with the healthcare system.
Uh, Ms. Torres, this is item four for, uh, that, that you presented, the pharmacy benefit renewal?
Uh, it's item, is, I have it as item three, but I could.
Do, do we have the, uh, uh, item three, the?
The retiree?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, we could go ahead and act on this.
I do have the retirees.
Yeah, my, my list says it is for them. Uh, any questions on this pharmacy benefit renewal?
So moved.
We have a, uh, Mr. Mallett, and?
Zuschlaw, second.
Zuschlaw, second, good. Thank you. Uh, any comments or any questions, any objections to it? If not, uh, this motion passes. Uh, thank you for bringing the good news and the good work of our, of your department and others involved in, in, in making these, uh, the savings.
We've been very pleased with the results of the contract, and we'll continue to monitor to make sure that they stay steady.
And you have good, uh, you haven't had many complaints from the?
We have not. The transition was very easy.
Good, thank you. You'll take the next item, please.
So if we can circle back to the third item, my apologies. It's a request to authorize the university to enter into a contract for fully insured LSU First Retiree Medical Advantage Plan. The LSU First Retiree Medical Plan is a fully insured Medicare Advantage Plan offered to Medicare primary retirees and dependents. Currently, the plan covers three thousand one hundred fifty-seven lives. The contract with the current partner ends December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, and in preparation, the university recently solicited proposals for the fully insured plan to begin on January one, two thousand and twenty-two. After a competitive process, United Healthcare was selected as the most qualified respondents. This approval would give the president the authorization to execute a contract with United Healthcare that would have an initial term of three years. At the option of LSU, acceptance by the supplier, the contract may be renewed for two additional twelve-month periods. It's expected that a contract with United Healthcare will lead to significant savings to the university due to a forty percent reduction in premiums and a three-year rate guarantee. The forty- The 40% reduction results in an annual savings of 3.4 million per year to LSU and a $506 annual savings to the retirees. The documents have been reviewed by LSU Human Resource Management, LSU Procurement Services, and Office of General Counsel. We would request that the board provide the president the authority to act on their behalf in consultation with general counsel to execute an agreement with United Healthcare.
Any, thank you. Any questions, Ms. Torres?
So moved.
Mr. Mallett?
Second.
Harrison, thank you. Ms. Harrison, and then if there are no objections, this motion passes. And I believe that, does that conclude our list of items, Ms. Torres?
Yes, sir, it does.
Well, thank you. With that, I would accept a motion that we adjourn the committee. Ms. Harrison, and we have a second? Mr. Mallett, thank you. There are no objections to adjourning it, this committee is adjourned.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brown.
Is Mr. Woods here?
No, I will...
Okay, will you be back on?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
We'll adjourn the property and facilities committee. And Ms. Griffith, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Woods? Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Aronson?
Here.
Mr. Armentor?
Here.
Ms. Jones? Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Morris? Mr. Temple? Mr. Chairman, there's a question.
Okay, thank you. We have one request to act on. Ms. Torres, would you present that, please? Thank you.
Request is from LSU A&amp;M to approve a consent to financing for Delta Kappa Epsilon. There's a ground lease between LSU and Delta Kappa Epsilon. Delta Kappa Epsilon operates a fraternity house on LSU's campus. In order to finance the construction of repairs and renovations necessary to maintain the house in the condition required by the lease, DKE intends to borrow approximately $85,000, which will be secured by a leasehold mortgage on DKE's lease with LSU. Under Section 11 of the lease, written consent of LSU is required for such a leasehold mortgage. The $85,000 will be borrowed from a conventional lender or a related national DKE organization. The debt will be the sole responsibility of DKE. LSU is not a party to the loan and will have no legal liability for the debt. There is no obligation or expectation for LSU funds to be used in any way to repay the debt. The mortgage will not extend past the remaining term of the DKE lease, which terminates January 2029. All documents will be reviewed by general counsel prior to execution by the president. And we request your authority for this process.
Any questions? If not, we'll accept a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Mallett, second. Thank you. If there are no objections, this motion stands approved. And with that, I'll ask a motion to adjourn our property and facilities committee.
So moved.
So, we got Mr. Arbiter and Mr. Mallett. So, no objections, this committee is adjourned. Mr. Dan, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Mr. Brown. Mr. Armentor, please convene the affiliated organization oversight committee.
I'd be happy to. Ms. Griffith, please call the roll.
Mr. Armentor?
Here.
Mr. Morrow?
Here.
Ms. Aronson?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Morris? Mr. Temple?
Here.
Ms. Werner?
Here.
Mr. Zuschlaw?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, there's a question.
Thank you, Ms. Griffith. I now call on Guy Laverne to present the issue of a development agreement between the Pennington Center and the Pennington Foundation. Mr. Laverne?
Good morning. Thank you Supervisor Armentor and members. I'm Guy Laverne, Associate Executive Director and CFO at Pennington Biomedical. Dr. Curran regrets he couldn't be here today, and I appreciate the opportunity to represent him and Pennington Biomedical. So, we're proposing to enter into the Development Services Agreement that is currently under consideration with our research foundation, which will enable us to scale up fundraising activities for the center. As we embark on our obesity awareness campaign, we are looking to begin changing attitudes about obesity on a national scale and to be able to respond to any philanthropic opportunities that may arise during the campaign. Pennington Biomedical has never employed development staff. And it seems prudent to leverage our foundation's already existing infrastructure and fundraising assets by providing support to allow them to scale up their operations rather than adding staff and a new administrative unit at the center. The Development Services Agreement will allow us to work to achieve our goals with some efficiency. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions?
How do you currently fundraise?
Currently, all fundraising activities are done within the foundation. So, we don't have development, development staff members.
So, this will formalize it and have directed...
It will allow them to scale up their operations and add more staff members to bring our fundraising efforts to the next level, to a national level.
Thank you.
Other questions? Is there a motion to recommend the proposal as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Brown for the motion, Mr. Morrow for the second. Is there any objection? There being none, the motion passes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Armentor, who's second?
Mr. Morrow.
Mr. Morrow's not part of this committee.
I'll second.
Mr. Temple, thank you.
We'll substitute. Of that committee.
You call my name.
Mr. Morris?
Oh, it's Morrow. It's Morrow. We will not substitute. Is there a motion to adjourn the committee?
So?
Mr. Brown, if there's no objection, the committee is adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Armentor. Ms. Werner, please convene the athletic committee.
Thank you. Ms. Griffith, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Werner?
Here.
Mr. Temple?
Here.
Mr. Blossman?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Morrow? Mr. Patmore?
Here.
Mrs. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Woods? Mr. Zuschlaw?
Here.
Madam Chair, there's a question.
Thank you so much. We all know it's always a great day to be a Tiger, but in the last two weeks, we have seen Tigers perform on the greatest stage that we know in the world in the 2021, 2020 Olympic Games being, going on right now. And I am so excited to talk about, for just a moment, those Olympians who have represented LSU in the past or currently. They are representing countries from Australia, Norway, New Zealand, Jamaica, Hong Kong, Canada, Trinidad and Tobago, Nigeria, Mexico, Sweden, Great Britain, and of course, the great United States of America. At current count, LSU athletes have won gold in soccer, the great Mandu Duplantis, Gold in Pole vault, Gold in USA Swimming, the first one ever by Brooks Curry for an LSU swimmer, Aliyah Hobbs, Silver in track, Nathaniel Mitchell Blake, Silver for Great Britain in track, Vernon Norwood, Bronze for the United States in track, Michael Venus, Bronze for New Zealand in tennis. And also, our great Coach Howard Dobbs helped coach the US Women's Softball to a silver medal. I'm so proud of all of our athletes, all year round, in everything they do. But this year, LSU is well, well represented at the Olympics. After that, I would like to now call on Athletic Director Scott Woodward to present today's items. And we will present them in one, at one time. And unless there is any objection, at the end, we'll take one motion to adopt all the items on the agenda today. Mr. Woodward?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for that great recognition of our wonderful student athletes. And just so you guys know, President Tate is always ahead of the game. And he and his staff and my staff are planning a wonderful reception at his house for these medalists. And we're going to honor them in due course when we can get them back in lovely Baton Rouge. So, thank you, Mr. President. First of all, we have the contract of Kim Mulkey, which you know the terms of. And the contracts in front of you are four for head coaches and four for assistant coaches, as well as Satia Messer, her top assistant, and Brad Davis, our new offensive line coach. Those are ones that you and that we've discussed at previous meetings. And just wanted to go over it again real quickly. As you well know, Coach Mulkey's contract essentially was an assumption of the Baylor contract. We took the terms of that contract and essentially copied them, and that was agreed to. And you can see the numbers enumerated there. Our next head coach's contract is our softball coach, Coach Torina, who we're going to amend and add to hers. And as you can see, we're doing that in a nice way and continuing on with a longevity piece of her compensation, which was negotiated previous to me being here, but which is good. One of our competitors tried to steal her, and we were able to retain her. This will make her very competitive in the country, top five, top six. And we expect great things to continue in softball as well. Our women's golf coach, I couldn't be more proud of Garrett Runyon and the job that he's done, especially being led by his mentor and friend Chuck Winstead, our men's coach, a national championship-winning coach. And I think Garrett's headed in that direction. For you that don't know, Garrett finished ninth this year in our NCAA Championships, one shot out of advancing to match play. And we were ranked in the top three all year, and it was just a really good, good thing for him. In my opinion, we're getting Coach Runyon at a bargain. He's going to be probably top five or six in the conference. And he's deserving of that, and I expect great things of him. Again, you all know about Jay Johnson and our attraction according of him from University of Arizona. Again, I think we're in the very competitive range with his compensation. If you look at the top 10 national coaches, I believe he's going to be in the top seven or so and bunched up there. And as you well know, our league is very top-heavy with good coaches and good teams. And he will be top six or seven. So, I think it's a fair place to be for a young man of his accomplishment. And there's room to grow and room for reward. Finally, the assistant coaches, Brad Davis, hometown boy, who we attracted from Arkansas to be our offensive line coach, is coming, is here actually, and doing a marvelous job. And he's a Bel Air High grad. And unfortunately, college, we didn't recruit him well enough because Oklahoma got him and won a national championship with him in 2000. But we've changed that here in Baton Rouge, and that day's a lot different. And we're having a lot more and better success in Baton Rouge on recruiting. But Brad's glad to be back home with his parents and recruiting and coaching these kids up very well. And I couldn't be more happy with him. Again, I mentioned Satia Messer, Kim's top assistant, and her salary, as well as Dan Fitzgerald and Jason Kelly, our two baseball coaches, which are very, very good and competitive. These are great coaches, and we have a strong competitive pool. And Madam Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have because it's pretty well enumerated in front of you and to offer any comment, please do so.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, Mr. Dan.
Just a quick comment. Mr. Woodward, to tell you how much I appreciate these coaches. And you have always stepped up, whether it's Kim Mulkey that was a big splash, and now our new baseball coach, and the ability to go out and get great coaches because we all know, you know, we do like sports here. And then doubling down on somebody like Beth Torina, and I'm a huge fan of hers in the softball program. So, I just really appreciate going to get great talent and then holding on to the great talent we have. So, I would like to thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions or comments? Madam Chair, I'd like to offer a motion to accept all the items as presented. Thank you, Ms. Jones, seconded by Mr. Starnes. Any objection? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Woodward.
Thank you so much. And just in closing, there's a lot of excitement across the street at the Football Operations Center. The young men reported last night, and I think there's a little chip on their shoulder. They have something to prove, and I think they're going to be ready to go and make us all proud. So, I know that's their sentiment and their feelings. I haven't talked to most of them and looked at them in the eye last night. And let's go, and let's have a great season, and go Tigers.
I do, Scott, hold on one second. I do have one question, comment. We do have an enormous amount of talent, not only in the coaching arena and in the athletes, but we do have a past talent named Pete Maravich. And I understand through many conversations between you and myself and the board members that we are going to really work diligently to have his statue put up?
Better than diligently, Supervisor Blossman.
And I know that we had talked about, we can't do it before, during football season because of the construction. So, the last game is November 27th. So, let's shoot for maybe January 27th for this thing to be finished. That gives you two months.
You know LSU processes better than me, but I promise you, we'll get it done in the first quarter.
Yeah, I think it should be pretty easy to do that. But I appreciate the effort very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blossman, Mr. Brown.
Yes, I believe I saw that the football team has a very high percentage of vaccinations. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. I'm very proud of that effort, and I'm very happy. The team is at 97.4%. And for you that want numbers, Mr. Temple, that's only two players that haven't gotten it yet. And I think we're going to get them there instead of, you know, real human beings. But the most impressive thing is that everyone who touches our football players from a coaching and from a support staff standpoint are 100% vaccinated. Everyone that reports to that football operations building. Proud of them.
Wonderful. Well, I hope that we can communicate that to our student body in a positive way to hopefully bring them along too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Woodward.
One last thing, Madam Chair. I apologize for the meat locker conditions in here. I never thought I'd be apologizing for air conditioning in August, but here it is. Sorry.
Just make sure it's turned on when we get back here in September. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn the committee? Mr. Brown, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Jones, any objection? Hearing none, the committee is adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Dan.
Thank you very much, Ms. Werner. The committees have now completed their business. The recess has ended. The board will be reconvened just in time to take a recess. And we will take a lunch, a bit of a lunch break at this time. Thank you.
What time are we coming back from lunch? Mr. Chairman?
What do we need, 45 minutes, maybe?
Yeah, perfect.
So... Let's say, let's say...
12:45?
12:45 is close enough.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. The board will reconvene, please. Dr. Cassidy. We will have an update from the Office of Civil Rights entitled nine, Dr. Cassidy.
Good afternoon. Since the Board of Supervisors meeting on June 18th, I'm pleased to report that we continue to make headway in exceeding the recommendations of the Hush Blackwell Report. As I have in the past, I'm going to use five thematic areas to present our progress. First, under operations, I'm thrilled to... First, under operations, I'm thrilled to announce that we have hired a full-time Title IX Coordinator. Joshua Jones is currently the Title IX Coordinator at the University of Kansas. He has years of experience in the Title IX arena, is a lawyer and former prosecutor, and will soon receive a doctorate in higher education. He's noted on the University of Kansas campus as someone who can bring people together from across campus to collaborate on Title IX issues. We're looking forward to his arrival on August 23rd. We also hired another civil rights and Title IX investigator, Lydia Adiosin. Lydia comes to us from the NCAA where she served as Assistant Director of Compliance of the Mountain West Conference. She's a graduate of the Paul M. Abear Law Center and it is great to welcome her back to Baton Rouge. Second, under our processes, Permanent Memorandum 73, the policy prohibiting sex and gender-based harassment and discrimination, including sexual misconduct, has been revised, is in effect, and available online. It has been updated for clarity and to sync with the new state laws regarding the handling of cases of power-based violence. The Board of Regents has established a Power-Based Violence Work Group to revise the umbrella policy for all higher education in Louisiana. LSU is represented on that committee by President Tate, Angelina Cantelli, who's a student co-chair of the Tigers Against Sexual Assault, and me. We've had input into the draft of the new policy and met with the full work group earlier in the week to discuss changes. Third, under training and education, on July 2nd, LSU hosted an all-day training session on sexual assault and violence for Title IX coordinators and allies. Campus coordinators from all campuses were present for the in-person workshop, along with the entire Title IX office at LSU and allies from student life, res life, HRM, athletics, and LSU Police Department. In addition, LSU purchased a year membership for the Student Contact Institute for all LSU campuses. This includes a library of hundreds of online training modules, webinars, and links to a wealth of information on all forms of sexual misconduct. Members of the Title IX units and any others identified as allies on campuses have unfettered access to all the training materials for the upcoming year. Four, under record-keeping and reporting, our first quarterly report was presented to President Tate on July 12th. He has a copy of that and I can provide that should you want it. And five, under communication and accountability, we've greatly expanded our support website for those affected by domestic and sexual violence. The new website is filled with content to help survivors, respondents, parents, and employees. Our Help Us Here website can be viewed at www.lsu.edu/support. We also have added a Title IX mandatory reporter guide to our website to clarify expectations of our employees and to provide information about reporting. This guide can be viewed at, it's a very long address, it's lsu/titlenine. If you go to lsu/titlenine, you'll get, a couple links more, you'll get it. An updated action plan with information on each of the 18 recommendations from the Hush Blackwell Report is available on our website to keep the public informed. It's updated monthly. The action plan can also be found at lsu.edu/titlenine review. As of today, our action plan shows that we have met the requirements of 18, I'm sorry, of 11 of the 18 recommendations in the report. I want to reiterate something that I said the first time I addressed the board and that is that addressing issues of sexual assault and violence is more than checking 18 boxes. It takes a substantial program of prevention to accomplish that. We are well on our way to providing the foundation and starting that prevention. That's my report. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Cassidy, thank you so much. We appreciate all the work you have put in leading the team. I know that it's not been easy. We have, we're not just, we're not alone in this. We know that this is a scourge across universities all across the country and I do know firsthand what a challenge it has been to recruit a new Title IX coordinator and leaders for this office. So, thank you for all the work that you and the entire team, the president's office, everyone has put into this. My questioning kind of comment is, one, to thank you, but also, could you highlight for us, as everyone knows, I'm the mother of an incoming freshman. She'll be here next week. And that precious 18-year-old that I'm turning over to this university, where I get to watch her a little closely, but I would like to know how you would address parents who will all be coming, the 13th through the 50th, dropping off our children here, how we are better communicating with our student body, like what they've experienced through their online orientations they've been doing or those who've been able to come to campus, and then in that first welcome week, how we're going to be communicating to them topics about prevention and reporting and, you know, how we will empower our students, especially our new freshmen.
Great. So, there are a number of, a number of, well, let me tell you a few things that I know they're talking about. Number one is the Navigate app, which is what they use to register for their classes, I'm sorry, to register to see advisors and things like that. They're being told and shown that on that app, you can register to actually come to an appointment with a Title IX officer or to go to Lighthouse. So, they have that available for them there. On the LSU mobile app, they can go to, if they go to that and click it on, there is a link to Survivor Support Services. So, if anybody finds themselves in a position where they need those services, it's easy access to that. I met last night with a group of students, there's a President Student Task Force on the Prevention of Sexual Assault and Violence, and they are putting together a fall campaign that is going to be discussed at the welcome week. This is students, educating students about how to prevent sexual assault. They're going to be doing some particular programming in the first month, I believe in September, on, they want to do some things on what is consent. They feel like that's a huge issue for students and they also are going to do some programming around reporting, how students should go about reporting. I think those are all good things. I think the consent part of it starts to get to the prevention piece. The reporting part is the after the fact. We do need to do both, both parts of that. And then I know I'm speaking this afternoon to some resident assistants, the resident halls, the students who are in the res halls, and providing them information that they are going to be using to provide to the students in their dorms at their first meetings. So, those are, off the top of my head, those are a few things that I know we're doing.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I think informing and engaging our students and students teaching students, you know, we know, we all know how kids take advice from adults, but getting the students involved in that educational process with our incoming students is vital, so.
I agree, and we have a host of students who are very willing, young men and young men and young women from all corners of the campus who are involved in this task force and who are ready to do that, so.
That's fantastic news and great progress.
Yeah, it's really great. I'm very proud of them.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Warner. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Starnes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Cassidy, have you heard the term "trauma-informed"?
Yes.
What does, what does that mean?
It means taking the perspective of the survivor into consideration when you're going through the process of somebody who has been assaulted and all the way through the, I'm going to call it, through the Title IX process. Right now, there is a discrepancy between a trauma-informed process and the actual process. For example, in the hearing panel that we have to have, if it goes that far, there is an ability to cross-examine a survivor. And that's really not a trauma-informed approach, but that is required by state law and federal law, frankly. So, what we do from a trauma, what we take from our perspective from a trauma-informed is we're trying to limit the number of times that our students, our survivors, have to tell their story. So, we have trained all of our investigators on how to ask questions, how to get the full story the first time, how to, well, also, our process does not require that the student go to an investigation if they don't want to. So, they're in the driver's seat to begin with. They can report, but they don't, if they say, "I don't want to file a complaint because I don't want that person to, I don't want to have to go to a hearing," we allow that. So, we're trying to do everything that we can to allow the survivor to feel comfortable in the space and to allow them to heal. When it does go to a hearing, we have, we have to have an investigation and we have, I'm sorry, we have to have a hearing panel with cross-examination and that's where we're...
Can't we do both? Can't we take a trauma-informed approach and an approach that respects due process rights when it comes to what punitive, if any, actions would be taken against someone who's committed a violation?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Dr. Cassidy, I want to join in the comments, particularly from Ms. Warner, and thank you for your really hard work and where you stepped up to the plate in this whole issue and we appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Well, thank you. It takes a village.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, I will call on Mr. Starnes to present, propose the changes to the bylaws and regulations. But before I do, I will tell you that I accidentally stumbled into Dr. Drotty's office one afternoon and he, and Mr. Starnes were going through this and Mr. Starnes graciously invited me to sit down and go through it with him because, you know, it's a lawery kind of thing and I lasted about 17 seconds before I came up with an excuse to get out. So, I'm very much, and I know we're all very much in Mr. Starnes' debt because going through this stuff is pretty tedious and it's one of those things that needs to be done from time to time. So, certainly appreciate Supervisor Starnes doing that and the good work he did and Mr. DeQueer, General Counsel DeQueer going through it with him and Dr. Drotty. So, I'll begin with a thank you and turn it over to you, Mr. Starnes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's very kind of you. And yes, I've spent some time going over the bylaws and our regulations. Mr. DeQueer, Dr. Drotty assisted greatly and Ms. Arsenault. We've had many discussions about these things and pursuant to what we've kind of come up with, I am proposing some changes to the bylaws. There are also some proposals that I've gathered from conversations and the experiences of myself and my colleagues. As an overview, the changes are primarily in the committee structure. I am proposing first that we create a committee on risk management and this committee will have two permanent subcommittees, legal and audit. I am including into each existing committee and each new committee we create, an element for diversity and inclusion. The Diversity and Inclusion Committee will be an oversight committee of the whole that will facilitate the specific diversity elements in each of the committees. I'm also proposing to create a standalone permanent committee of the Board of Supervisors for Title IX compliance. As a first step, we're going to implement all 18 recommendations of the Hush Blackwell Report, but those recommendations are a floor, not a ceiling. This committee will be tasked, again, first with ensuring that all of these elements are met, but going forward to design a Title IX reporting and investigation and due process model that does dual-track, is going to be trauma-informed so that we take care of all of the people who come before us with these issues and respecting due process rights of the accused. So, we can do both, we will do both, and I'm going to task this committee with figuring out, working with everybody to figure out the best way to do that. Also, I'm proposing to create a committee called Research and Agricultural Extension. I'm particularly proud of this. I think it keeps us in touch with LSU's primary land-grant focus. First, introduced in 1862 by the Morrill Act, which tasked land-grant universities with education in the fields of engineering, agriculture, and the military sciences. Seems to me that committees of the Board of Supervisors haven't necessarily focused on these things and I'm going to combine these areas of education with our research function. We are a research university. We're going to embrace that, we're going to encourage that, we're going to grow that. Finding new things, finding better ways to do things is exactly what LSU does. That's what we're supposed to be doing and we're going to hear about what we're doing in research arenas, whether it's the agricultural extension, whether it's here on main campus, whether it's at Pangton Biomedical Research Center, a world-class research institution, wherever, our medical schools, LIGO, wherever we do research, I want to know about it, hear about it, encourage it, and we're going to promote finding new things to learn about and we're going to highlight it by this committee. Also, in this committee, and I believe broadband, which is a big word these days, is going to be a focus of this committee because I think that's going to be a way to increase access to health care, particularly in rural areas, and also help the agricultural, the business of agriculture by enabling us to use modern-day technologies with, modern-day technologies if we have internet access, for example. Something that's, well, you would think would be simple as that. I was told by farmers I know that all the new agricultural equipment that's sold today comes with ways to integrate with the internet and learn about crops and/or where your cattle are or whatever it is, but that's only useful if you have internet access. So, I think that introduction of broadband is going to be a tremendous benefit in that area and I'm going to task this committee with studying, with implementing that. The particulars of these changes to the bylaws, I'm going to ask Dr. Drotty to walk us through. Dr. Drotty?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'll step through fairly quickly. In the bylaws, Article 1, we're moving, we're only moving the definition of chair down to the next section. We are also changing the propositional phrase in the title of Louisiana State University at Shreveport. Right now, it's in Shreveport. By our documents, the statute says "at Shreveport." We're going to conform that to the statute. Article 2 has some restatement of the constitutional authority of the board, which currently does not exist in the bylaws. And we also make the change from members of the board or board members to the word supervisors throughout the document and throughout the regulations as well. And the last major change in Article 2 is, is an item that's been a note for a couple years, a few years now, how many votes are required to remove a board officer. The proposal is 12 votes, which is two-thirds of the board. In Article 3, nothing really changes so much. What we did is we broke apart the agenda paragraph so that proposals that emanate from the university follow one process and those that come from the board follow a different process. And also, we did a little fine tuning, just because we changed from calendar days to business days in the last reiteration, we really didn't address a change for the board and that's done here. And also, just to clarify, the bylaws had a piece in it where it says two-thirds vote. You could add an item to the agenda on the day of the meeting. That's not legally correct anymore. You need unanimous vote to add those things. And so, that is Article 3. Article 5 is about committees. As Mr. Starnes indicated, there are a number of changes here. Probably the one that is listed the most is diversity and inclusion is inserted in just about every committee. There is an assignment for every committee on that front and the Diversity and Inclusion Committee now becomes a committee of the whole overseeing and facilitating the work of the various committees. In the Academic Committee, we're removing research to create the new Research and Agriculture Extension Committee. So, the Academic Committee will be detailed to instructional, scholarly, scholarly work and other issues of academic concern such as student conduct. Let's see here. The Audit Committee is being removed and made a subcommittee of a Risk Management Committee. Legal Affairs is also being added as its subcommittee to the Risk, the Risk Management Committee as well. Mr. Starnes, I'm requesting a small amendment to the proposal. In the Risk Management Committee, I inadvertently typed the word "three" instead of "these." So, it should say "these subcommittees."
Do we need action right now on that?
We can make the action at the end.
We can do it now. Let's do it. Can I have a motion to amend the... Can I have a motion to amend the proposed bylaws, to change the word "three" to "these"?
Yes.
We have a motion by the chairman and a second by Supervisor Jones. Is there any opposition? Without opposition, the motion carries.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Starnes also has the Title IX Committee, which he just explained as well. And on the special committees, there's really no limitation on a special committee, so we've inserted a sentence saying it runs a continuous with the board chairman, who does the appointing of special committees. Mr. Brown, did you have a comment about committees?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I would like for us, and perhaps we could consider it in a special committee, to have a committee put together for nomination of a chairman. And that committee, I suggest, be made up of the present chairman, past chairman, chairman-elect, and maybe a member from the Board. And that would be a one-time annual meeting to have a nominee to present to the Board for the next year's election of a board chair-elect.
I would suggest we digest that until the next meeting, if you don't mind, Mr. Brown. I think it has, I think it should be considered, but being you just brought it up, I would like to review that with you, if that's okay with you.
Sure. Thank you. As a point of information, these bylaw changes do not take effect until September the thirteenth, so we have one more board meeting before that time. Article Seven, we do add a couple of new things. First, as everyone knows, the Board approves new academic programs. What is not written, but what we do practice as custom, is the approval of departments and major divisions of the university, so that now is codified as well. There is also an item related to the conferral of degrees that's in the statute related to the Board, but that's not actually in the bylaws either. So it merely lists that you have the authority, obviously, to confer degrees, which includes honorary and posthumous degrees, which is our custom now, so there's really no deviation from what we do now. The next item, let's see here, is in Section L. Item number two, there's, there's a sentence with a couple of edits. I believe that one of the proposed edits is for a change from fifteen percent to ten percent. I believe that Mr. Starnes has a...
Yes, thank you, Dr. Drotty. Certainly, there's an issue I wanted to address, not necessarily married to the way that we proposed it, the way I proposed it. After conferring with several supervisors, there may be a better way to accomplish what we need to get accomplished here. So I would ask for a motion to withdraw the proposed amendment in Section One, L. Two. Can I have a motion to that effect?
Submove.
Moved by the chairman, seconded by Supervisor Werner. Is there any opposition? Without opposition, that carries. So please delete that proposal from the proposed bylaws.
Yes, sir. All right. The next item is also our custom, it's just not written in the bylaws, is the Board approves all student charges, which are student fees and tuition. Everybody knows that. It's just not listed in the bylaws, and this removes any lack of clarity on that point. In Article Eight, there's a sentence added that says the president is authorized to take action deemed in the best interest of the university. I believe that's a broad statement. And that is also added in Article Nine as well. And lastly, in Article Thirteen, it merely says that these bylaws would take effect on September the thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. And Mr. Starnes, that completes the summary.
Thank you, Dr. Drotty. I'm also, we also looked at the rules and regulations. I asked Dr. Drotty to show me the rules, and he said we don't have any. So I said, we should have some rules. So we have taken some things that were in other areas, and so now we're going to have a new book within the foundational Board policies. And Dr. Drotty, would you walk us through what is now going to be the rules?
Yes. So this proposal creates rules which pertain to the Board. And this means that if you decide that you want any rules or customs codified, we do it in this section as opposed to putting those in the bylaws. What we did here in this proposal is Article, Article One is about fiduciary responsibility. That's kind of a standard thing in Board bylaws and regulations these days. Number Two is about the officers, and it pertains to communication and action. This is an item that's been of interest to the Board now for about five or six months, that they just want to clarify that a chair or small groups of Board members can't act as the whole. It requires the ability, the vote or consent of the whole. Article number three is actually things that already exist somewhere else. The first is the Scholarship Review Committee. That committee was created in the Board Scholarship Policy, which is a standalone policy, so nobody would ever know that that ever existed. We're pulling it in. The second is a resolution that you adopted just a few months ago to say that the healthcare chairman also serves on the OLHS Board of Directors as an ex officio member. All we did is we took the language and we codified it in the rules. And number four is the scholarship policy was a standalone policy as well, and what we did is we took that and we pulled it into the rules as well. The only difference about the scholarship policy is that there was a reorganization of the pieces, but nothing changes. The qualifications to get the award are the same, your number of scholarships are the same, nothing changes. I think the only change that really is substantive is to the benefit of the student, which is it does, the policy did not specify which TOPS award that is the basis of the calculation. So what this does is says, hey, if you have an opportunity scholarship, which is the basic TOPS award, your Board Scholarship is, is reduced by that amount. However, if you have any of the stipends from the performance award or the honors award, you get to keep that stipend to put toward books or housing or whatever else. So this accrues benefit to the student. One other thing I think is important, we did put a time expectation on the Board staff in terms of processing those requests. I think that was really an issue that the Board wanted to address as well, and we were happy to do that. Next are regulations of the Board.
Yes. Before we get to the regulations, I would just like to say, it's not that some of these things didn't exist, but we had something called rules, regulations, and bylaws, and it occurred to me that some of the things that were in the bylaws were better off as regulations. And again, nothing was in something called rules, so we should have something called rules, a book of rules, and things that should be regulations should be in the regulation section, leaving to the bylaws things which should just be in the bylaws. So with that, Dr. Drotty, would you walk us through the regulations?
Yes, sir. Jump to Article Four. It's just a cleanup piece of language on the group health insurance piece. In Article Five, there is an audit section. We're taking out, we're taking the section out, and we're creating a new article at the end of the regulations related to audit. So it's everything that was here, I'm sorry, that's not, that's not accurate. There was a piece of conflicting, there was a piece of text that was conflicting with the audit charter. And what Mr. Starnes wanted to do is to resolve the conflict and leave the audit charter as the standard document for audit, and that's what is going to occur here. I believe it's Article Nine, that is the new audit article. It is the charter as was adopted. There are no changes to the audit charter. We also create in the business section, let's see here, Section Eleven, which is Scholarships and Financial Aid. This is a new authority for chancellors to handle their own scholarship policies. So for example, Chancellor Clark came today to talk about a small change in the scholarship policy. He would have the authority to make that change on the campus level. The only change here is that the campuses have to report to the president how their scholarship program is meeting their institutional goals. That's the only difference. Article Twelve is required reports. Right now, in the bylaws, you have a list of required reports, but you also require other reports that just are not codified really anywhere else except in standalone resolutions. All we did is we grabbed all of those required reports, and we put them together in one easy list, so now you know all the reports that you require and the timeframes in which they're to be submitted. Mr. Starnes, I believe you have an amendment for Paragraph A.
The, what I would like to add as a required report, a twenty percent increase should the president choose to do so over a two-year period, we would like to have that reported as a required report. This is the second part of removing that first bylaws amendment that I requested. We're taking it out of the bylaws as a limitation on authority and instead just adding a required report.
I second that motion. Sorry.
I need a motion.
Oh, I'll make the motion.
Mr. Williams, second. Supervisor Williams, second.
Did you mark it fifteen to twenty?
No.
So did you say that?
No. The authority is unchanged, but the reporting every two years, an aggregate, an aggregate of twenty. So if it's ten and ten or something like that.
Mr. Mallett, for the record, the, I believe that the motion is, report on any employees who receive greater than twenty percent increase in salary, excluding promotions, within a twenty-four-month period.
So we have a motion from the chairman, a second by Supervisor Williams. Is there any discussion? Any objection? Without objection, the motion passes. I think I need a motion to approve these bylaws as amended.
Wait, wait. Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is this, you know, look, it's a lot of paperwork. I was trying to go through some of it, and it's amongst all eight hundred and something pages of the documents for the full board meeting today. Is this something that, I know, Remy, you spent a whole lot of time on it, it's obvious for that. Is this, is this a committee that went through this, or it's just?
It's just me.
Okay. And it can't take, it's not going into effect till September thirteenth?
That's correct.
Yes, okay. I'm just wondering if it's possible to let all the Board members digest it again and say, look, if they have any questions. I know a lot of it's, you know, I don't call it secretarial, where there's some little changes here and there, and I understand that, and there's some things that are, that have a little more thought put into place about calling a meeting that I read through, and how many votes you need at that meeting. I think maybe we ought to give everybody an opportunity to digest this a little, but if it's not going into effect till after the next board meeting, to just wait till the next board meeting to, to approve these things in global. That's just me. I, I mean, look, I had a chance to read some of it, but I clearly did not go through every document page by page to see what, what is being offered and what, you know, a small item and what might be a large item. That's just my thinking, that, you know, I don't know if anybody else has that thought or not. If not, let it rip, and if I got changes, I'll bring them next month. I know, that's fine with me.
I think that's the better thing to do. I mean, obviously, I'd be open to any discussion about these things, but I would like to see them enacted now, because work has to go forward on what we need to be doing as a Board.
But I don't think any, any of this is going to be even enacted till September thirteenth. Did I hear that wrong?
It won't take effect until then, that's correct.
Okay, well, then you can't start doing these things till then, right?
Well, it won't be enacted till September thirteenth, that's right.
Mr. Chair, why don't you just make the motions?
Yeah, that's fine. I can just make...
Well, we have, Supervisor Dampf, Supervisor Williams moved to adopt, and Supervisor Jones seconded it, so we're in a discussion.
Can I, can I ask? Jason, as I, as I look through this, there seems to be a mixture of substantive changes and technical changes. Is there any way y'all could compile for the Board members? Because as I read through this, some of them are changes, but it's not, it looks like a substantive change, but it might not be. You just may have moved it from somewhere else. So maybe if what you could do, instead of just a red-line version, if you could prepare a document for the Board that says, here are the substantive changes, and here are just the technical changes, it might give people a comfort level.
Sorry. In response, Mr. Williams, yes. I'm happy to, I'm happy to do that, depending on Mr. Starnes's motion.
Is there any further discussion?
Is the issue, is Mr. Blossman wants us to, you asking me to amend the motion?
No. You, you've made a motion to adopt. And it's been seconded.
But what was Jay's, what was Mr. Blossman's request?
I just asked that we could digest it and vote on it next month. It's not going into effect until the thirteenth. Your analysis is clearly better than mine, that you could put the document to us in a little easier format to kind of say, hey, these are some little changes, and here's some real changes, would be very helpful. But, you know, look, there's a motion and a second. We can vote if y'all want. I just asked for that, but that's fine.
Call for the question.
I'll call the question.
The question has been called. I would ask that we vote on this and see where we are, and then however it comes out, obviously, we can amend it at the next board meeting, should there be a need to, but I think we should move forward by adopting these changes. But the question has been called, and I get, Ms. Griffin, would you call the roll for a vote?
Are we voting, I'm sorry, are we voting on to approve all of the changes, or we, or to wait until the next meeting?
Approve the changes. Approve all changes.
Could we amend the motion?
Yeah, I guess it'd be my motion to amend. I was going to suggest that, but, but not suggest, I was going to ask that. I know the question's been called. I mean, what is the, is that the feel for the body?
Let, let, let me, and let me interrupt. Technically, calling the question is a non-debatable motion to end debate. So if we want to do that from a procedural standpoint, there should be a motion to end debate, a second if so desired, and then a vote on that, and then debate would be over.
Good God. We're going to be here all day if we do all the...
Well, well, there was a debate as to what "call the question" means, and that's technically a motion to end debate.
Has it been seconded?
So the, the proper request would be, is there a motion to end debate? Is debate in, what, okay, so that's, so parliamentary-wise, debate isn't over?
No, until you approve a motion to end debate.
No.
Was there a second to that motion?
I, I heard Mr. Dampf call the question, which technically is a motion to end debate. There would need to be a second.
Is there a second to my motion? I guess the question...
There's a second. I'll get, I'll second it.
Mr. Mallett seconded.
Okay. If there's a second to the motion to end debate, it's a non-debatable motion that requires a two-thirds vote. I'll ask Ms. Griffin to call the roll. This would be a vote on a motion to end the debate. If the vote passes by a two-thirds majority, then we would vote on the main motion.
We've never done that in history of this Board.
Mr. Dampf?
Yes.
Mrs. Starnes?
No.
Ms. Aguilera?
Yes.
Mr. Arminter?
Yes.
Ms. Aaronson?
Yes.
Mr. Blossman?
No.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mallett?
Yes.
Mr. Morris? Mr. Morrow? Mr. Temple?
Where did you vote?
Mr. Williams?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Woods? Mrs. Zuschlaugh?
Yes.
Ten yes, three no.
So the motion would have passed by a two-thirds majority, so the next motion to come up would be a motion, not the next motion, the next vote would be a vote on the main motion that was on the floor, and debate has been closed. So this would be a motion to approve the bylaws as amended previously, which has been seconded.
Winston, can you make a substitute motion?
Hold on one second.
Is it a two-thirds?
No, this, the, the vote on the... No, this, the, the vote on the main motion would be a majority vote. Let me look at something real quick. No, once debate has been closed, the main motion's coming up for a vote.
Mr. Dampf?
Yes.
Mrs. Starnes?
Yes.
Ms. Werner?
Yes.
Ms. Aguilera?
Yes.
Mr. Arminter?
Yes.
Ms. Aronson?
Yes.
Mr. Blossman?
No.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mallett?
Yes.
Mr. Morris? Mr. Morrow? Mr. Temple?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Woods? Mr. Zuschlag?
Yes.
11 yeas, 2 nays.
The motion carries.
Mr. Starnes, again, thank you. And, and the comment was made that it was Mr. Starnes' work. I do want to remind everybody I was in there at least 11 seconds. So the, um, for our approval, are the minutes of the board meeting held on June 18th, 2021? These previous, these minutes have been previously provided. Are there any questions or comments? I will accept a motion to adopt the minutes of the meeting.
I move second.
Motion by Mr. Zuschlag, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mallett. Is there any objection? Without objection, the minutes are approved. Next, we move on to personnel actions. The personnel actions were provided and include contracts for athletic department officials. Is there a motion to approve personnel actions?
Second.
Ms. Jones, seconded by Mr. Mallett. I think we need a roll call. Is there any, any discussion? I think we need a roll call.
Mr. Dampf?
Yes.
Mr. Starnes?
Yes.
Ms. Werner?
Yes.
Ms. Aguilera?
Yes.
Mr. Arminter?
Yes.
Ms. Aronson?
Yes.
Mr. Blossman?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mallett?
Yes.
Mr. Morris? Mr. Morrow? Mr. Temple?
Yes.
Mr. Williams? Mr. Woods? Mrs. Zuschlag?
Yes.
13 yeas and opposed.
Thank you. The motion passes, the personnel actions are approved. For our approval, we have the fourth quarter investment report. Are there any questions about this report? Is there a motion to accept the report?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mallett, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Ms. Aguilera. Are there any comments, questions? Without objection, the minutes are, the investment report is approved. Next, we have the faculty and staff advisors report. Professor Robinson will present on behalf of the faculty.
Yeah, he did have my shots and I've had COVID. The LSU faculty have had a busy summer filled with teaching, research and service upon which the various COVID mitigation measures have been imposed. The majority were pleased with the appearance of bump in their July paycheck. Given that LSU faculty salaries are about 12% below the SEC average, we ask that the annual cost of living increases for our hardworking faculty continue to be a priority. News of impending changes in faculty activities and review software and student information system at LSU are being met with both relief and alarm. The faculty wish to remind the board of supervisors the workday and LSU 360 debacles about five years past. Faculty still bear scars and resentment from the chaotic implementation and the amount of work and effort that was shifted to them and local administration. We're not opposed to change and improvement, but any increase in workload during these stressful times would not be welcome. We ask that appropriate advance notice, accessible training and incremental changes be available. Faculty also put forth that many have already entered 10 to 30 years of activities in the previous activities software and they want to be assured that they will not have to repeat the process. A multitude of the EIA efforts are underway. Faculty are front and center in these efforts and committed to change. There is some concern that efforts are not well coordinated and that there appears to be duplicity of effort. We want to make sure that the faculty contributions are meaningful and effective, that our time is well spent and that change is forthcoming. Let's make sure that there is communication and cooperation among the EIA efforts to optimize efforts and outcomes. In a related note, faculty have been praised of some significant hardships imposed upon incoming foreign graduate students due to what appears to be a lack of communication between the graduate school, ISO, the registrar and versa. In one particularly horrifying situation, a student was threatened with deportation when the register unregistered them from their classes due to an unpaid tuition that was applied incorrectly due to an error in their personnel file made by local administration. The poor student was thrown into a horrifying situation that transpired within a period of 24 hours through no fault of their own. Took many hours for the student and their major professor to work through the administrative errors that landed them in this situation. Just one example that highlights the need for a more organized and welcoming onboarding process for our LSU students that come to us from other countries. Faculty remain concerned about the fall COVID mitigation plans amid the latest surge of the disease primary among unvaccinated individuals and the threat to our young children as well as vulnerable vaccinated individuals. Faculty ask that administration consider risk to our families, loved ones as well as ourselves should we be exposed to an infectious dose of the virus even if we're vaccinated. Appropriate social distancing is vital to our safe return to the classroom. We also ask that plans be in place to assume in-person teaching responsibilities of faculty who may need to isolate or quarantine due to COVID exposure. Not enough faculty to continue in-person instruction of a significant percentage due to COVID-established mitigation measures. The faculty put forth, the faculty council, it is represented elected members of the faculty senate. We ask that this model of shared governance be respected and applied as it has been at LSU since the early 1970s. Faculty leadership is ready, willing and able to work together with the board of supervisors and administration for our LSU's best path forward. Only the faculty leadership looks forward to working with appropriate individuals to make the state constitutional changes for faculty representative on the board of supervisors and we ask you for support in this effort. Lastly, on a more personal note, let me express my sincere gratitude for the services that Chancellor Richardson made while at LSU UNIS. He both restored confidence in the administration and laid the groundwork for our shared governance there. And finally, my appreciation for all the hard work you, the board of supervisors and the chancellors have made during these most difficult times. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Professor. There, we appreciate your comments and remarks. The, the staff advisors do not have a report for this meeting. The, it is now my great pleasure, with great pleasure is my privilege to introduce our new president for his first of many, many, many reports. So President Tate.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you and all the members of your esteemed supervisory collegial team. I want to thank a couple people, well, not by name, but I'll just say, in my first 30 days, I had a chance to visit UNIS Alexandria and New Orleans Monroe. I'm going to thank the chancellors that there, those respective institutions, in particular UNIS Alexandria. And New Orleans for hospitable visits. I was very impressed with the operation at all those institutions. In many cases, I continually said that it looks like you've been given a nickel and you turned it into a quarter. You know, just really a tremendous spirit with limited resources to do outstanding things. And I greatly appreciate you and your staffs for what you're doing. I also anticipate being in Lafayette, Shreveport, Nacogdoches in the next few days. Look forward to visiting those sites and getting a feel for what's happening with LSU and that environment. Overall, I'd say the first 30 days have been amazing in terms of the individuals I've had a chance to meet with. And in doing these visits, I've also taken the time to read a little bit about the history of LSU. There's one particular quote in LSU history book that I, I thought was interesting for what I want to say to you very briefly. And it was offered in 1868 in a report to the General Assembly. And it reads, "The spirit of the age has demanded that our young men shall no longer be educated for the times which have long gone by and for condition of things which no longer exist." A lot has changed since 1868. Clearly, the institutions are no longer all men and they're quite diverse on many metrics. But I think the spirit of that statement is actually extremely important. We find ourselves in an age of pandemics and in that context biomedical science is hugely important. If you haven't understood that, you, you should have heard my faculty colleagues earlier today asking for a vaccine mandate. Clearly, very interested in the advancement that took place over the last year in miraculous fashion with respect to vaccination being created. I personally would like to have an agenda where scholarship is first at LSU. We are here in a wonderful facility and I enjoy winning as much as anyone in every sport and want to be supportive of it. But I do think scholarship first is something we need to double down on. And if you've heard me speak about this, it's pretty straightforward for me. I really believe that our research infrastructure should be emphasized, the teaching and learning environment is prioritized, resources for students front and center and being very important. We've had some discussion about how to reallocate to make sure students are taken care of. I think that's a central part of what we should be doing. And similarly, in this environment, I'm very interested in scholar athletes and the scholar part being emphasized. There are some things that I would like to offer you that I observed in the first 30 days that seem to be transparent to me. From the research side, it's very clear of the importance of agriculture and coastal research here in Louisiana. And we actually do that very well and I think we need to continue our investment in those areas at scale. Certainly, there have been conversations with colleagues about energy and alternative energy forms that will continue to be extremely important part of what we do in our planning. And the thing that popped the most in every place that I visited was the need for LSU to really invest in what I would describe as computational science. Pennington, where I also took a visit, I didn't mention them on the front end because I didn't have to leave town. But Pennington was a great visit and clearly they needed, in need to invest in bioinformatics. Our agriculture group where I, where I also visited again here in town, the agri-science and the biotechnology efforts clearly require a deep investment in informatics. And in every medical school site visit, you know, the one in New Orleans and I'm anticipating in talking to colleagues in Shreveport, I talked to a few elsewhere, the clinical areas also need informatics. We need to be outstanding in informatics. And it's one of the most expensive investments you have because it's really hard to recruit faculty in those areas. Everybody wants to be great in those. And speaking of faculty, I would like to say a couple of things about how I view the faculty. I think it's extremely important and when we think about the teaching and learning process, faculty recruitment and retention is the most important thing we can do in the teaching and learning process. My colleague mentioned the salary situation related to faculty. That's untenable and not sustainable. I'll offer you this example. I'm a big baseball fan and spent 18 years in St. Louis and watched the Cardinals develop and they constantly won over and over again. And the way they won is they had an outstanding farm team. They invested in the minor league program and they had assets that were quite high and ultimately they would use those assets in order to get a flag, in other, in other words, to win the pennant or the World Series. And the real question we have to ask ourselves here at LSU is do we want our faculty to be viewed as a farm team for other universities? Or do we want to put a flag up and say, we have the outstanding faculty and we're winning on the research front? We're either going to be a farm team or a flagship. It's that simple. And we have to invest in our faculty, they're extremely important. The most valuable thing that we actually have here in terms of moving forward to teaching and learning process is our faculty. Faculty honors, I think, you know, is extremely important. We have lots of endowed chairs. I just want to say publicly that going forward, what I would like to do anytime a faculty member earns an endowed chair is that we actually have an investiture and it's a formal event and that we come and all of you come out and celebrate the outstanding things that they do. It's, it should be visible and not invisible. And that's extremely important for me going forward. Related to that particular matter, I'm deeply interested in who we recruit here. I heard our conversations earlier a bit about enrollment management. A big part of the teaching and learning process are the students and who you actually bring here. I think we have to look at our honors college and ask ourselves, can we invest more and be better? And in each one of our institutions across the LSU system, how can we actually recruit the very best people? And the way to get there largely is related to a big part of the scholarship first. We have to make sure we have resources for students in each of our individual campuses so that we can bring in people who traditionally could not afford or would not have access more broadly defined. With respect to students, I would like to offer the following. As a flagship system and the A&amp;M campus being a flagship of that, PhD education is vital. You can't recruit PhD students if they don't have health benefits. You can't recruit PhD students if they don't have a floor in their stipends that are actually allow them to live. It's simply untenable and I'm going to say this in this context, it's unethical to recruit students in PhD education if you don't provide those. It simply should not be done in a flagship institution. And so we've got to figure out collectively how we're going to reallocate and allocate to make sure our PhD floor is outstanding and the very best minds want to come to LSU to study with an outstanding faculty. These are just a few observations I've made, I've made over my first 30 days related to strategy. And in part, if you heard me prioritize, prioritize science, engineering, technology, graduate education, it's a fact. I think those are things that we should be prioritizing. However, and to get there, there are a couple of things that have happened. One, I asked Cynthia Peterson to step in as dean and a senior advisor to the president to help us make sure the science is a prominent part of what we do. And also you saw that a contract or a letter for Mark Bieger to come in as a vice president for strategy. A bit about Mark Bieger, we worked together at the University of South Carolina. He's a graduate of West Point and an elite strategic planning thinker and worked in the army in a way that he was charged with their strategic planning. And I believe he could add tremendous value for us as we think about synthesizing the system and unifying our resources and actually building a strategic plan that's active. A big part of what we have going now is we have a plan, it's not active, that means you don't have a plan. And so ultimately, we need to develop a strategic plan over this year or in, over the next 18 months collectively as a system. And each individual campus, of course, will have their opportunities to. And each individual campus, of course, will have their opportunities to, uh, contribute to that plan and also develop more microplans for their specific organizations. And then we need to bring, come together and march forward in the same pathway. Mark has great skill set with that, and he's going to add value for us in, in that front. With respect to human capital, clearly, um, there are going to be a few national searches. One, with respect to the provost. Two, um, a, a vice president for agriculture and dean. And you already heard about a third one with respect to the vice president for civil rights in Title IX. All those will be national searches, and we're going to go out and find the very best people in the country and try to win them here to LSU. I'm, I'm going to stop there. I could continue going on, but I realize, um, this is the first report, and a lot of things that I want to say, um, may need to come in September because we'll have greater clarity of thought. I, I would also like to end my report with the following. We did ask for, and I want to make sure people understand, we did ask for the, the vaccination to be, uh, put on the state's approval. We won't have to necessarily wait for that. Once we get FDA approval, we are going to mandate that vaccine. That does, um, unfortunately, or fortunately, it's a law, allow some people to opt out. They do have a right to opt out, but we will be clear about it as an institution that once we have FDA approval, enrolled students and, uh, students who are, if it happens early, who might think about matriculating here in the fall, will be asked to take the vaccination. That's consistent with what your resolution was in the past. However, it's an expedited way of going about it because we don't have to wait on it necessarily to go on a list of approved vaccines by the, by the Health Advisory Group. That approval was, uh, happened for us today. Winston, what, about 11? And so we're gonna, we're gonna move forward with that, and hopefully, the FDA operates in expedited fashion to align better with what we have going here. Thank you.
Dr. Tate, thank you very much. I will accept a motion at this time to accept the committee recommendations from today's committee meetings. By Mr. Mallett, seconded by Mr. Zuschlag. Is there any discussion? I think we need a roll call vote.
I, I've got it. Mr. Dampf?
Yes.
Mr. Starnes?
Yes.
Ms. Werner?
Yes.
Ms. Aguilera?
Yes.
Mr. Armentor?
Yes.
Ms. Li- Ms. Aronson?
Yes.
Mr. Blossman?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mallett?
Yes.
Mr. Morris? Mr. Morrow? Mr. Temple?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yeah.
Mr. Woods? Mr. Zuschlag?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The yays have it, the committee reports are adopted. It is time for the chair's report. The hour is late. I want to, um, I will be brief as I always try to be. Like to welcome Dr. Lee, uh, our interim provost, and we're delighted to have him. I want to, um, just say a word or two about watching Dr. Tate for the previous 35 days or so, uh, and, 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 and tell you, he, you know, it's been a whirlwind. He's been everywhere. He's touched all the right buttons to come in with high energy and, and innovative ideas. A lot of that wouldn't be possible actually too with some great staffing work, so certainly want to thank, uh, Ashley Jason and, and, and others. I, I hate to start naming names because there are others too, but, but, uh, uh, the efficiency and, and the, the great work that has been done, you know, it's not possible without good staff work as well, so certainly thank them. But the, um, uh, we're off to a great start. I knew that the search committee did a great job when they found this leader for us, and the first 35 days have certainly borne that out. So, thank you, Dr. Tate, for all you've done, and we expect another, you know, 10, 15 years or so of the same. So, uh, our next meeting is September 10th. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Aguilera, seconded by Ms. Jones. Without objection, we are adjourned. I would like the board members to go outside for just a minute so we can get a picture with Dr. Tate at the football field, uh, for his first meeting, please. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being here.